I hereby call to order the Roseville Economic Development Authority meeting for Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Executive Director, which call to roll.
Member Graff.
Here.
Member Strawn.
Here.
Member Eton.
Here.
Member Schroeder.
Here.
Here. And at this table, we have our city attorney, who is hopefully not going to be pressed too much on EDA things this evening, Rachel Tierney, but her firm does handle EDA activities as well, and our city manager slash executive director of the Economic Development Authority, Pat Trudgeon, at the other end of the table. We have other staff and guests will be participating as the meeting proceeds. I should check with folks, can you hear all right in the room? We've got an overhead mic that's supposed to pick everything up, but we're not all unsure if people are able to hear us as well. All right, with that, I should note also that for members of the public, if you need an extra copy of the agenda for either of our two meetings this evening, there are extra copies on the back table right under the big clock. We do also have one master copy of all the meeting materials printed up in a three binder available for the public for reference as well. If you've got a cell phone, we'd ask that you make sure and silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt tonight's meeting. And we'll go over more rules of the road as we get into the meeting and such as rules for public comment and things like that. But with that, we'd ask folks now to stand if you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, next on our agenda is approval of tonight's EDA agenda. Are there any changes from a staff perspective?
There's that, Mr. President.
Any changes from a board perspective this evening? All right, we've got the agenda as presented, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Seconded by member Graff, seconded by councilmember Eton. Discussion on the motion to approve the agenda, here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, so we have our EDA agenda for this evening. We will forego a public comment at the start of the EDA meeting, we'll take that up at the start of the council meeting immediately following the EDA meeting. That then brings us into our business items for this evening. Our first business item is to consider authorizing a professional services agreement with the Center for Energy and Environment for energy audit services that are performed on behalf of our residents, and I'll turn it over to Jean Kelsey, our Housing and Economic Development Manager.
Program Manager.
Program Manager. I knew there was a word missing in there to bring this item before us, which is something we've looked at a little bit before.
Thank you, President Rowe and Board members. For your consideration tonight is now finally a contract that is in place with Excel Energy with CEE. This is now allowing us to enter into a contract for energy audit services. It would go through the end of two thousand and twenty-six, because that's how long their contract is with Excel. You do budget every year twelve thousand dollars for subsidizing fifty dollars of the total cost, which is sixty for an energy audit. And what we did have in January was at least a memorandum of understanding in place as, like I said, just to keep the lights on. And so now we have the contract for your consideration. If there's any questions, otherwise there's a resolution authorizing you to enter into that contract.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kelsey. Are there questions for staff on this request to go enter into the contract with CEE? We have one question on the, no substantial changes to the terms from our prior contracts.
Correct.
Just it was a matter of waiting for them to get under contract with Excel.
Correct.
With that, we'll double check if there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening. Once again, we're being asked to enter into a contract with the Center for Energy and the Environment to help with the home energy audit services that are performed for residents in Roseville. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this item at this time? Seeing no one, then we'll proceed to board consideration. Is there a motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by member Graff, who authorized, and that's actually a resolution, I believe, authorizing us to enter into that agreement and approving the agreement. So that's what's being moved, is the resolution. And seconded. With that, is there any discussion on the motion as the maker of the motion, member Eton?
Good program, thanks for continuing.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the resolution and entering into that contract, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, and that is approved. Staff and CEE on that. Next on our agenda, item five B is to consider amendments to contracts for private redevelopment for Roseville leased housing associates, the Oasis and Harbor sites in Roseville, and consent to a new collateral assignment for the tax increment financing note and tax increment. This is undoubtedly a topic that everybody is here to talk about this evening. I'll turn it over to Ms. Kelsey to attempt to try to make us understand.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you so much, President Rowe and Board members. Back in, and if you can imagine this, in two thousand and twenty and then also two thousand and twenty-one, we entered into development agreements with the Oasis and then the Harbor. Those are the apartment buildings that are behind Barley's and they're affordable housing. At that time, we did enter into minimum assessment agreements, but we did allow for language related to that we thought that at some point the state legislature might change the structure of the four D, which is how they're taxed under affordable housing, which they did. And so starting effective in two thousand and twenty-five, there will be a reduction in the amount of taxes that the properties will generate, and it's down to that they are overall only being taxed at twenty-five percent of the overall value. So that allow, at that point, did have to have us revise the TIF notes, because there's no way that we would make up that difference in paying what was supposed to be assessed on those properties. The other thing that the developer requested was for us to really allow for the minimum assessment agreement to reflect what the properties did end up being assessed at. Originally, the Oasis was only estimated to be at forty-one thou- forty-one million, forty thousand, and now the assessed value on that property is six, sixty-two thousand four hundred thirty, I'm sorry, sixty-two million four hundred thirty-five thousand, a lot more zeros there. And then the Harbor ended up that that assessed value also did change, where it was assessed originally at the first year at twenty-four thousand nine hun- twenty-four million nine, I'm not used to saying millions here, twenty-four million nine hundred thirty thousand, and then it was after that going to be at forty-nine million eight sixty. We now are going to allow that to be reflective currently at the higher amount of seventy-three million five hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars, a lot of numbers there. The Oasis now will only generate about one point nine million in TIF over that time period, and we are not changing any of the terms. We originally, originally on the Oasis committed to a seventeen-year TIF note, which is, we are allowed to do twenty-five years on affordable housing. And then the Harbor, we allowed an eighteen-year term, and that will only generate now two million and forty-four thousand five hundred fifty. So the, also the Harbor at this time is converting from their construction loan to their permanent loan, so that is why that one has to have the consideration for it to be converted, and allowing us to consent to the new collateral assignment of the TIF note. These are just customary requests that always come before you as providing the financial assistance that we did do for those two properties. There's two separate motions that we are asking for in order to have your consideration tonight. One would be for the modification of the Oasis, and then the other one is the modification of the Harbor's documents, along with allowing the consent to the new collateral assignment of the TIF note.
Thank you, Ms. Kelsey. Are there questions from the EDA board for staff on this item this evening? Questions?
I'm going to ask one. So I understand the numbers, but is there any difference in what the city is going to get in the end from the taxes?
Ultimately, aft- after the TIF note is satisfied, then yes, there is the reduction of what the te- the properties will generate in property taxes.
Because of the change in the legislation.
Maybe just to clarify that too, so in other words, the, the program is set up as pay-as-you-go, so we have certain qualified types of expenditures that can be essentially reimbursed from the TIF collected money to pay for those various activities on the development. Once those costs are paid for, we continue to collect increment into our pool that we can potentially use for certain purposes, depending on what the legal limitations are on that. And that's typically what, what happens on these projects is, is even if they sort of pay off early, we may continue to collect increment that can be used potentially, depending on the rules of the road there. But ultimately, we are going to be collecting enough essentially to pay for the anticipated costs that we're, we're helping with on the project, is that right?
Correct.
So we wouldn't be doing this if that wasn't the case.
Right, and remember, one of the things that-
Only extend the term.
Correct. And the other thing is, is that ultimately, in the long run, their operating overhead will be less, because they're not going to be paying that amount of taxes in the long run. So that's also ultimately reflected back to the developer for why they don't need that additional amount that we-
In other words, the gap goes down.
Correct.
Thank you, appreciate that additional explanation. This is an opportunity once again for members of the public to speak on this item. So once again, we're being asked to make some changes to the terms of the agreement because of the change in the state law as to how much property tax can be collected on these properties because of their affordable status. And then also we have the addition, the change to the assessed value, which changes all the math essentially, and then the one change related to the assignment, collateral assignment. All hot topics, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to these items this evening?
I do want to know if there's any additional questions, the developer did have representation here for you tonight.
I noted that. A member Schroeder.
Do we have to do each one separately?
I, I think we're being asked to do two separate motions, only because one includes the collateral assignment and the other one doesn't, is probably part of it, and there's two separate resolutions.
Would move to approve the Oasis.
It's been moved by a member Schroeder, seconded by a member Eton, to approve the resolution related to the Oasis amendments. Discussion on that motion, a member Schroeder is maker. A Brett and other discussion? All right, it's fairly technical. With that, we've got the motion before us to approve that resolution, making those changes on the Oasis. With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, that one is approved. And then as relates to the Harbor.
I'm sorry. I'll second.
Okay. By a member Graff, seconded by a member Strawn, by agreement. This is for the resolution for the amendments related to the Harbor project. Discussion on that motion, maker, seconded. Other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, and that resolution is approved, those amendments are authorized. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that's what I have to sign off on. That then brings us to our third item on our agenda for the EDA this evening, and that is to discuss potentially soliciting proposals for a conference on housing needs assessment and market study, and we have our community development director, Jenna Gunlock, with us this evening to bring this item before us. Welcome, Miss Gunlock.
Thank you, President Rowe, members of the board. Staff is seeking direction on whether or not you want to engage in update to the two thousand and eighteen housing needs assessment. That full assessment was provided in your packet. This assessment over the years has aided staff, planning commission members, city council members, EDA members, and of course, the development community with housing projects in Roseville over the last six years. Since the assessment was completed, I think we've built about nine hundred units of multifamily housing and an additional one hundred units of attached and detached for sale housing. Most of that has been absorbed into the community, meaning it's fully online. I also want to note, last year, the state legislature enacted a housing sales tax for certain efforts related to affordable housing. That effort will generate about three hundred thousand dollars annually of monies to be spent towards housing. I also want to note that there's some language working its way through the legislature this year that would also sort of tweak that law a little bit, where monies can be spent on supportive services or staff of supportive services providers for supportive housing. And so if that passes, it even broadens the sort of opportunity to spend that money. So given the market changes in the last six years, given what we've done in terms of housing growth, given the sales tax monies that are becoming available, we thought at least updating the study was an appropriate time. We also think there's an opportunity with a housing study to expand upon not just what types of housing units we need or how many housing units we need, but are there other housing-related needs in our community that can't be met with just unit count? And if we understand that, it might be able to provide better information for how we program the various monies that we have available for housing. We met with a bunch of different consultants who engage in this work, because we just weren't sure if there was such a study out there, if the consultants sort of crossed over into those different areas who could do a housing, and we did learn, of course, we can update our housing needs assessment, but there are other databases out there that look at things like homelessness, people accessing services related to homelessness. And so we think that there is an opportunity to merge those two areas to create a more holistic idea of what we might need in our community. So we wanted to come forward to the EDA to number one, see are you ready to update the housing needs assessment, because there is a financial cost associated with that. And then if you are, are you interested in broadening the scope to try and understand, based on available data sources out there, what other needs we might be able to meet with the different monies that are available related to homelessness and some social services needs related to housing? And if you are interested in both of those things, allowing staff to work with that list of consultants, there's a few others we haven't met with that we think might be able to work in this area, and see if we can partner, partner them up on one sort of study that looks at both of these things, and then bring some proposals back for you to consider in either July or September, it just depends on how quickly we can get those consultants paired together and get them to put proposals together. So that's why we're here this evening. I also, we've been working collaboratively with some staff in the police department here, our homeless navigator, Molly, with social services, our social work, and so we would make sure that they're engaged in this as well. We know they have a lot of anecdotal evidence about what they're seeing in the community, but if we can sort of tie that in with some data, I think it would be really helpful to sort of program some of that money that is coming in, and there's a timeframe associated with it to spend, and so that's why we wanted to do this now. So that's all I had for a presentation, I can help and answer questions as can the three staff behind me.
Thank you. Questions, member Strawn?
Thank you. My understanding in the past has been that a lot of times when we consider a thirty percent AMI or something for the deeply affordable, that those do our best succeeding if somebody does have supportive housing. Would that be an opportunity, or would there be area for us, if all these other factors and the housing study and everything were to happen, where we might be able to utilize that type of funding in that way? To see success in a deeply affordable, or we still struggle with finding someone who's willing to build that, right?
So I'll attempt to answer the question if I'm understanding it correctly, and Jeannie knows a lot about this as well, so she can certainly come in and add anything that I might miss. There are very few developers out there who are equipped to work in the thirty percent AMI housing units, and the developers that do it successfully are the nonprofit developers that offer housing services onsite. And we have spoken with a few of those developers over the years, and they haven't been interested in a project in Roseville for a variety of reasons, but we're not in the right area to check all the boxes, to achieve all of the assistance that they need. And a lot of times, these projects need project-based section eight vouchers on top of affordable housing TIF, which even if you do affordable housing TIF on a thirty percent AMI project, even throughout twenty-six years, you might not generate enough increment to close the gap. And so that's why they need those section eight vouchers on top of that affordable housing tax increment. So the language at the legislature and the language in the sales tax talks about supportive services, and so there are organizations out there that offer supportive services that maybe aren't necessarily affiliated with a developer or project. And if that legis- if that legislation passes, we think there is opportunity where we could financially assist organizations for providing people housing in Roseville that is under the supportive services category. I want to note, a lot of what Ramsey County intends to spend their money on, their sales tax money on, is financial assistance to developers who are building those thirty percent AMI units, who are providing supportive services. So that's an interest that they're, they're looking at right now as well. She's got program manager in her title, I don't, so I don't want to pretend I know everything.
Other questions from members?
Brett? So is part of that, that request around understanding what the state funds could be used for after this legislative session, is it really kind of looking at how we can use that in the sense that if we are in the right spot for someone to build much thirty percent AMI or provide the services ourselves, we're looking at how can we spend that money with other organizations in our area?
So I'm not totally sure yet what it might be, but there are a couple of things. If that legislation passes, it opens up more opportunities for us to spend that sales tax money on administrative functions who provide help to people in supportive services. For example, the housing navigator position, that is something that could be funded with sales tax money if this were to pass. The other thing is, there are a lot of people who are home, who aren't necessarily homeless because they don't meet the definition, because they haven't been without a home for a certain period of time, or they're couch hopping, and there might be other services that certain providers provide, where maybe we could offer assistance specifically to those who call Roseville their home that we could assist on. You know, we, homeless va- hotel vouchers, you know, we can work with people who are accessing food shelves who consider Roseville their home. There, there are a bunch of different data sources related to social services that are tangentially related to housing, where we might be able to offer direct financial assistance for those individuals or families who call Roseville their home. But we just don't fully understand yet, and we're still meeting with these consultants to try and understand what data sources are available that they could sort of inform us on for housing-related needs.
I guess I'm, I'm just unsure, in the sense that we have some fantastic organizations that we are aware of and we are working with right now, if it's a question, can we use the money for that? Just learning that would be fairly short theoretically and to the point with some legal support, but would you be proposing that we get into as an, as a city into more individual support, kind of running some of these social services funding ourselves?
I don't think that is our plan at all, absolutely not. We'd be providing financial services to those organizations who are already providing those services.
Just to, to clarify, so it's almost like a market study for this, for lack of a better word, niche of the marketplace that we don't study in the normal past studies that we've done to have a better understanding of what the need is and in the community or around our community and how we might be able to, to match with that in terms of what we might be able to do, is that-
That's the idea. But we haven't found a specific example of another community who has done that, so we're just trying to learn as we go, and that's why we met with a bunch of different consultants to see what we could learn. We may continue to meet with them, and we may come back to you in July or September and say, this is what they were able to provide us. It's not very comprehensive, but there are some additional things we can look at and bring back to you, but until we engage with them and know if that's something you're even interested in, we didn't want to spend the time and effort on it.
Tonight, they ask is really to, to say, should, should you continue those conversations around that in addition to the typical study?
Updating the typical needs assessment, yeah.
A member Graff?
Reading through, because I actually did go through the previous report pretty thoroughly, and it was good to refresh, but there were a lot of things that have changed from that time, and I myself think it needs, needs to really be updated. I mean, there were, as you mentioned, the number of units, but also changes in zoning, things that we've changed that need to be reflected in a report like this, so those are my thoughts on it anyway.
Schroeder.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with, I guess, member Graff. I wanted to say councilman. On that, because I really do think we need to update this, and I actually, my understanding of what you're asking is, one, to say, yes, we need to update the housing needs assessment, but then, two, to continue your work to find out what possibly we could else add into this by you continuing those conversations with. And, and the way I look at it is, it can't hurt to start looking to see what's out there, you know, because you're going to bring it back here before we do it, and so to me, I think it makes sense that you would continue to talk to the consultants and see if there's something that could be useful for us, and that it can be integrated with this, so I think that's a good idea.
Strawn?
I would just like to echo the other members. I think that a study would be very important. Since then, we've had, the base price of the houses that were available under a hundred thousand dollars was a bit shocking. You're not going to find one that's habitable under that rate at this point, and so the housing prices, but as, as well as the changes in the number of market units, and then just understanding how all the pieces play together a little bit, I just think it's really important, and we've had a pandemic since then, and we've had immigration and outmigration, and we've had, you know, just all kinds of things, and I'm seeing again now a lot of homes starting to turn over in my neighborhood after a long absence of that, so I think it's just really important for us. And I was thinking that this is likely to be very helpful to us as we, hopefully not soon, but as we get into our next comprehensive plan, for us to know that information.
It's the schedule.
I know. But those, that information always helpful to know, because I would think that helps guide what we do and how we proceed in that way.
The idea is if, if you want to spend your housing sales tax money in a meaningful way, this hopefully is a quasi-scientific way to back up why you're spending the money the way that you're spending it.
Any other questions for staff? Just one clarifying question, so I thought you had said something about there's time limits on when we have to use the, the money that we get in from the state sales tax for housing. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, so when the sales tax was originally adopted, the way the law was written is it said something to the effect of if, if you weren't able to spend the money, I think by the end of the third or fourth year, if you put it into a land, like, there you go, housing trust fund, then you could keep it. There's some interpretation of the law now, and some ways that it's being rewritten is it doesn't necessarily matter if you have a housing trust fund, you still have to spend it by the end of, it's the fourth year, it's the end of the third or fourth year. And so that's some more urgency, because yes, we're getting around three hundred thousand dollars a year, and that's going to change dependent upon how many casper and households we have year to year, but three hundred thousand dollars is not a lot of money if you're solely putting it towards the creation of units. And you don't, we just built a bunch of affordable housing units, it could be a while before we get a big project where we even could spend that money on a project, so having other areas to put that money to benefit Roseville as opposed to having to give it back is something that we're concerned about, we want to be able to keep and spend it in a meaningful way here in Roseville.
The three hundred thousand dollars is Roseville's estimated allocation based on what's collected in the state formula that divides it up amongst the cities.
Depending on sales and then dependent on casper and households, and that'll be adjusted annually, yep.
Is that something that could be used towards affordable ownership as well?
Yep.
Okay, so we, if we can't do it in certain areas, that might be an area where we could look at, at resourcing, but we've got some options.
Yep.
All right, I do want to check with members of the public once again, this is This is an opportunity for, uh, members of the public to speak to this item this evening. So the request is, uh, to authorize staff to continue conversations with various consultants about potentially putting together and, and actually potentially having those consultants put together proposals uh, for the board to consider, uh, to go ahead with an update to our housing study and potentially add this area to it. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? Doesn't appear to be the case. Uh, with that, we'll move to consideration. Uh, I think we're just being asked to, to do this by motion essentially. Conceivably do it by, uh, by, um, uh, if there's no objection, we can direct staff to do that. Is there any objection?
No.
Hearing no objection, that is the direction to staff.
Thank you.
All right.
Do it, do it.
That concludes the business for the EDA this evening. Uh, so is there a motion to adjourn the EDA meeting?
So moved.
Moved by number strong, uh, second by number graph. Uh, no discussion on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, and we are adjourned in our H, EDA meeting at exactly on time at six thirty. Uh, there'll just be a short five-minute transition here to, to start the council meeting.
Take our little things off.
To change your house.
House number thirty-three.
I suppose eternity.
Transformers.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, not eternity.
Exactly.
They, they get a really, they do a lot of work. Tagged.
I was looking to see, I don't think it takes.
Whatever, we can see it up on the screen, I guess.
Something okay. I read, times when I read about what people have to go through. Well, even Duran thinks it's terrible.
Hey, we're back from a short transition, uh, from the EDA to the city council. Uh, the city council meeting is hereby called to order at, uh, six thirty-two P M. And the roll call will stand as called for the EDA. There have been no changes to the attendees. Uh, we did the pledge of allegiance at the start of the EDA meeting. Uh, next on our agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. We only have two business, two business items on our agenda this evening. I had to double check. Uh, so I can't imagine that there are any changes. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second, it's moved by Councilmember Shorter, seconded by Councilmember Eton. Uh, discussion on that motion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm opposed. That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Uh, and that then brings us to, uh, public comment. I would just remind folks from the public who may have arrived since the start of the EDA meeting to, uh, make sure that your phones are silenced or otherwise, uh, don't disrupt the meeting this evening. We do have meeting materials on the back table for anybody who needs to access those during the meeting, and extra copies of the agenda are available there as well. Uh, with that, uh, the next item on our agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items that are not on tonight's agenda but may be of interest to the community or may be related to city business. Once again, we'll have opportunities, as we did during the EDA meeting, for a public comment during the agenda on those items. Uh, but if anyone's here this evening to comment on general matters of city business or related to the community, this would be the opportunity for that. Is there anyone here this evening to speak on our general public comment? Seeing no one, then, uh, we'll proceed, uh, to our business items. And our first business item this evening is item seven A, which is to discuss the purpose, scope, and role of the Human Rights Inclusion Engagement Commission going forward. Uh, and as our staff come up to introduce this item for us this evening and lead us through the conversation, I did want to note for the public's benefit that this is a topic that has been before the city council a, a number of times over the last several months and, uh, several years in one form or another. Um, and this meeting, uh, hopefully is sort of a, a coming-together point of those discussions, uh, including discussions at council level and coun- and discussions by members of the commission. And then also we have a subcommittee, uh, working on this as well, and staff has had many conversations, uh, over the many months, uh, as well. Uh, and so once again, this is sort of bringing it all together for a council discussion at our work session, uh, this evening in a little bit more informal format, and we've got a lot of time allocated. With that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Assemblyman Rebecca Olson, uh, to begin the, uh, presentation discussion this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Um, Mayor, you hit a lot of the points that I was going to hit, but I appreciate that. Um, as you mentioned, this has been a topic of conversation before the council for many, many months. I do want to highlight that the process, um, that you guys have kind of undertaken here, uh, from staff's perspective, has been a really good process. There's been a lot of listening, um, occurring with a lot of different stakeholders, both current commissioners, former commissioners, other community stakeholders, um, council members, staff. So there's been a lot of opportunity, um, and, and that good engagement does take a lot of time oftentimes. You know, have to put a lot of time and resources into this, um, make sure that you're hearing things and you're adjusting and everything. So tonight, as the mayor mentioned, um, our goal tonight is really to come to a consensus around what the purpose, the scope, the role, and maybe even the format of a group will be. Um, this process started, um, several months ago when council had asked commissions to review their current scope and, and duties. And at that time, the Human Rights Inclusion Engagement Commission spent many meetings talking about that. They brought forward what they thought, um, i- is where their focus and their passion lies. Um, and from there, uh, now it kind of moved into council discussion on what are the needs? What are the changes? Um, I think the, the process, as I mentioned, um, was really good. I think it's important that we always evaluate what we're doing, um, taking a look at, are they meeting the needs of what the community wants? Are we being impactful? Are, are the community members that are participating, um, getting out of their, their service what they want? Um, so with that, what we have here tonight for you is really a conversation, um, focused on building consensus. So what staff did is we worked with the subcommittee, um, took the, the feedback that they'd received, some feedback that staff had received, um, and started with a starting point, something, um, I view. For me, it's always easier to react to something than it is to build something from scratch in a group. So what we have is a starting point, um, and I'm going to turn it over to Antonio here, um, to kind of kick us off. But we do want this to be informal, so if there's questions that come up, please interrupt us. Please jump in, let us know. Um, and, and what you'll notice is some of this is really placeholders for terms. There's some definitions we'll want to kind of confirm with all of you as we go through this process, um, but really have it as a dialogue. And, um, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Antonio.
And, and just maybe before that, I'll say that typically the, the process at these meetings is for councilmembers to sort of look to me for recognition. I think the point that Ms. Olson is making is, let's just make it more of a conversational approach. So, you know, I will sort of defer to let people just kind of jump in as well. So, uh, wanted to make that clear from the beginning, just in case, uh, there was any confusion about that. And we should probably reintroduce Antonio to that.
Yeah, sure, that'd be great. Uh, hey, y'all, I'm Antonio Montes, the Equity and Inclusion Manager here at the City of Roseville. Uh, I think it's week eight we were just talking about this, so, uh, I know everything and I've met everyone and have solved all the world's problems. So we're pretty much done for tonight, right? So, no, um, all jokes aside, thank you Rebecca for introducing this. And, um, I, I, I just want to echo, I think that, um, there's been a lot of intentionality and a lot of care and a lot of, let's do this the right way as we've had this conversation. And we hope to present to you all some good stuff that you can give us your feedback on and say, yep, that's great. Uh, or maybe not, let's go this way, right? So that's kind of our hope tonight, is to talk about some goals and outcomes, uh, purpose and role of the group, some, some about the format, and then the next steps that Rebecca talked about. So, um, if you know me, which you all don't know me yet, but you'll get to know me, uh, one of the things that's really important to me is relationship. So every meeting that I take and/or I facilitate or I run, I start with relationship. Um, so what I'd like to do is start with a relationship builder as a check-in question, if you all are okay with that. And my question tonight is.
Your kid is cute.
What'd you say?
Kids are cute, yes.
I, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you for that. We had the chance to hang out at the, um, Community in Bloom event, and my kiddos were there, so that was a fun time. They really enjoyed the bounce house and the face painting, so shout out to the folks that did that. Um, all right, so check-in question. Uh, if you could live in any world, so I want you to think like a book or a movie. I'm, I'm pivoting a little bit.
Okay.
A book or a movie, um, uh, or any kind of like, any world that you can think of, what would it be? So like maybe Harry Potter, World of Wizarding, or Marvel, so you can't use either of those, because I put them out there. Totally joking, but just if you could live in any world, where would you live and why?
Don't have to go in order, right? You can just jump in when you got.
Conversation.
I guess I'll go first, though, right?
No.
I think that's fair.
You always have to go last, so you should be able to go first this time.
Who knew that this first question would be the stumper?
Yes, exactly.
Go ahead.
I want to live in this world because I can't really, I envision and I dream, but I'm kind of an artist by nature, so I bring it with me wherever I am. Um, and the first thought I had was just, if I could have a nice tele fence, it'd be my own backyard. And, um, maybe I could just work from home and I never get to have to leave. But, um, no, I, I just really enjoy nature, so going to the national parks and things like that. So my, my space is in this world, is in this reality. Um, of course, I'd love to solve all the problems and not have to look at Twitter and not know about all the doom scrolling things, but, um, there's a lot of good in this one.
I'm going to go very old school. I'm going to go to the Wizard of Oz. And it's partly because of some of the lessons that are buried in that movie of having a heart, having a brain, being yourself, being your best person. And there's no place like home.
As, as.
Good message.
Yes. High five.
Well, I'm going to pick, uh, it's sort of a, a real world that is in the past. Um, and I was sort of learning more about it in the last few years, that sort of during the development of, of jazz and big band music and things in Kansas City, there was quite a, a, a cultural aspect of, of that in Kansas City back in the twenties, thirties, and forties. And it would just be really interesting to be there as all that was happening and be a part of that. And it's before the Great Depression, so it was kind of a good upbeat time, you know? Stark Mykert was going great and all, and I say, the only problem was prohibition, I may have to deal with that. I hear that people found some ways around that. Well, I think that would be interesting to, to, you know, spend a little bit of time.
City licensed everything.
Actually, I think I was going to say that era was the reason that cities are licensed today. So anyway, that's, that's right.
Okay, fine, I'm going to riff off it all. I want to be, uh, in a musical. Right? I sing all the time. I teach singing, right, but, uh.
Auntie Mae.
But I, uh, um, but I sing all the time, and that thinking about that creative process you're talking about and the lessons you're talking about, um, so I think that'd be great.
Yeah, but now you have to give us which musical.
I was thinking, high school musical here?
High school.
Everyday life.
He's a high school music teacher.
I'm not going to give you a musical.
I mean.
Third up, you know.
Well, actually, what I, it, um, it's a little bit, um, you know, well, the reality, though, I, I'd like to go back in time to when I was younger, like my twenties and thirties, but know everything I know now. So when I go back, because I, I had, you know, a lot of great adventures, made a few not the best decisions, but, you know, and I could go back. So I could go back and enjoy all that and still have the, the wisdom and knowledge I have now. That would be awesome.
At forty.
Yeah, yeah, at forty.
Just going to say just before the pandemic.
Yeah, 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 that's right, that's right. That's what I'd like.
I'm looking at you, Pat.
You're looking at me?
Yeah, Pat.
Everybody at the table has to do this.
The amendment's here, so sounds like it.
Oh, boy, um, Rachel's got a cough. So, um, I like what was all said, and that's very serious and, you know, meaningful. And maybe I would just like to live in the world of Star Trek, to be in a spaceship exploring new worlds and new cultures. I think that'd be really, really cool.
Old school or new school?
Um, old school and the next generation.
Okay.
Both are, both are good, but it would be really neat just to explore all those things. I'm sure space travel isn't all what's made out to be in that TV show, but what they show seems like a lot of fun, so that'd be great just to meet new people and cultures and, and planets.
I've had episodes.
Just make sure you don't wear your red uniform.
Yeah, I don't want to die on the planet, yeah.
But if you could just adjust your shirt every five minutes, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Um, for me, so I'm probably going to date myself here, but when I was a child, there was a movie called The Neverending Story. I don't really remember The Neverending Story, but I remember that they got to fly through clouds, and I always wanted to fly through the clouds and be able to like jump around and play on them and everything. So I've had a thing for flying ever since, so I'm going to, I'm going to stick with that one.
So I did not know this was going to happen. I'm going to, I'm going to riff off about three different peoples and just, I'm going to go back in time. I, I would like to go back in time to the time that our constitution was being written, and not just because I'm a legal dork, even though I really am, but I would like to, um, see the contribution of women. What was going on then that we don't know about? I'm so interested in the way that sausage actually got made as opposed to the story we all hear, so that's my answer.
I think that would be a fascinating book to research what actually was.
If you could find him. Well, if he can get me my time machine.
Time machine is a consistent theme here, right? Um, let's see here, that's good. I would say, uh, I was on this field trip last week with the kids, and on the way back, we watched Willy Wonka on the bus. I hadn't seen that in forever, and so now that that's like top of mind right now, I'm going to say like, that'd been cool to like go through the Willy Wonka experience, and it was the original, so. It was the original, so. Yeah, so that, I think that'd been a, a fun little experience to be able to go through that, so that's top of mind right now, so. I appreciate y'all, um, this work is hard, as we talk about equity and inclusion, um, and it really starts with relationship. That's kind of my philosophy, the foundation of how we do this work. And it's really lifting up again what Rebecca talked about in terms of taking the time to be intentional and be in a relationship with all the different folks and all the different voices as we talk about this work. So we have to do that and be in a relationship with each other, and we do that by meeting each other and, you know, learning about each other, and we, you, you hear about folks' values, right? Like, what do you value, what do you value, what do you value, and these kinds of questions, and that's really important to me. So thanks for, for doing this with me, even though it might have been a little uncomfortable, I appreciate you. And I promise every time I come up here, I'm making that uncomfortable, so. I'm ready.
Is he, is he set?
Well, we have him on the agenda, well, we know.
Well, we know.
Well, we know when you're going to be here.
But you won't know what the question will be.
One of those friendly amendments, and you're like, what other business does he have?
Planned question, if I remember.
Yeah, no, it wasn't, so I do that from time to time, so, so I appreciate y'all. So we talked a bit about goals and outcomes a second ago, and, and our, our goal is to find some consensus and some purpose and some scope and duties and roles, and maybe some format for the group and the, um, H R I C and whatever this continues to evolve into, as we want to do this work together with community. So we're hoping to have a conversation with you all and get some consensus on those really important things, because I think that, uh, community has asked for that, I think that you all would like that, so we'd like to take this time to do that. So that's our goals and outcomes, is to get some consensus and support around these few items. How do y'all feel about that? Does that feel all right? Thumbs up, yeah? On the same page? Okay, great. So when we go through it and you're like, we didn't talk about this, and we said that wasn't a part of what we talked about on the front end, so.
I'm wondering if it makes sense for the public to maybe spend just a couple of minutes kind of talking about the bigger story of how we got to where we are tonight. I kind of covered a little bit of the most recent part in the intro, but I, I wonder if that might help kind of ground the conversation a little bit too, because, I mean, it starts back in, I think, the early seventies when, and I'm not going to do the whole story at that pace, but. When, when, when all of us were just a gleam in councilmembers' eyes, but, uh, the, so this, I think it became the thing to do in Minnesota, to do human rights commissions for a variety of reasons. And Roseville established ours, and I think at the, in the early days, human rights commissions that cities generally tended to actually hear, uh, and sort of act on complaints about human rights issues, among other roles. Uh, and so a lot of that was the beginnings of human rights commissions in Minnesota, and a lot of those roles have been taken on by the State Department of Human Rights. Uh, and so, human rights commissions have evolved over time, including Roseville's. Uh and so human rights commissions have evolved over time, including Roseville's. Um and I think, you know, starting probably ten to fifteen years ago, I think that there was there were questions that began to be asked about, you know, what are we doing here, what is the purpose of this? You know, how can we how can we serve the community best? We did programs like the essay contest on human rights issues that middle schoolers participated in and we had high participation rates. We actually got a several people who won the statewide competition out of Roseville schools. Um and so we did some, you know, great things along those lines. Um and then at one point in the early two thousands, the city of Roseville looked to uh expand our advisory commission activity to include community engagement. And this actually arose out of some work that was done in the Human Rights Commission at the time, looking at how we can engage our citizens better and we actually established a separate community engagement commission. And that worked that way as sort of two commissions for a few years, um for a variety of reasons. Uh that things got to a point where it seemed to make sense to to make a change to that and we actually merged the two commissions together. And at that time, there was a fair amount of angst about, you know, what happens to the Human Rights Commission, what happens to the human rights aspect of the Human Rights Commission. Um and and I think as we put those two commissions together, you know, the city had not done anything in terms of equity at a staff level, we hadn't gone through the GARA process uh or any of that. And so we put a lot of that and we didn't really know what we were doing in terms of engagement either. So we put a lot of that into the scope and duties and functions of that commission, that newly combined commission. And I think in retrospect, it might have been kind of a recipe for disaster, um just because it was a lot to ask and and I think the people from the community who stepped forward and were interested in serving didn't really know what they were getting into and there was just a lot of sort of people at cross purposes, not uh not good mutual understanding and and a whole lot of things along those lines. And so we we limped along and we we tried to do some things and we just ended up in the last few years having a lot of turnover on the commission. And even in our most recent discussion where the commissioners themselves and in some some people were cycling off, talked about these questions that are before us this evening, there were there were conversations such as, you know, we had the SREAP come before, Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan come before the commission back when it was being developed and the commission really didn't know if it was the commission's role to advise on it or what they should do with it. And that really hit home uh with me saying, okay, we've got we've got some things we gotta figure out here. And so that's the genesis of where we're at this point, so maybe that gives a little bit more broader context and now I promise to be much more polite for the rest of the evening.
No, I think that's that's great, um so we'll just keep kind of going, so please continue to interject those types of things as we go cuz this process is your process and we're we're here facilitating it, so we wanna make sure that you guys are the ones that are speaking for the most part, so.
SREAP is Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan.
Yes.
We thought it'd be worth a little bit of time to talk a little bit about some of the kind of the vision of where we think the equity and inclusion work will go across this organization. This is just kind of really super high level, so I'm gonna throw some things at you. Uh but we do plan to come back um as a group to to share this more in detail with you, uh to give you a presentation kind of on where we feel like the work will go as we build it over the next twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months on the really great foundational stuff that's already in place and already happening across this organization. So on the very front end of this, I think we have figuring out the Equity and Inclusion Commission, which is a little bit of a placeholder right now, I'm not sure that that's the final name that'll be there, so you'll see Equity and Inclusion Commission in here, doesn't mean that that's the final name of what this group is gonna be called, but that's just something that we're working with right now. So we wanna figure that out, right, that's kind of our first step in 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 the plan. Uh the next step is to stand up then a steering team internally here at the city and that's gonna be with the uh senior leadership team, right? So really being intentional about creating spaces to have conversations and have some learning and development around equity and inclusion and how do we really continue to advance that within the organization from a leadership standpoint. After that, Equity and Inclusion Action Team, which is very similar to the steering team, but it's more across the entire organization at all levels of the organization, not just including senior leaders, but also leaders from from every space in the organization, whether they are leader in title and or not, there are leaders across this organization. We want them to be a part of this work as we think about equity and inclusion here at the city of Roseville, so that would happen. Uh then we like to think about uh Employee Resource Group, right? So we know that um talent and employees uh want spaces to be connected and be supported and all the things that that just have a resource space for employees. So we've been talking about the idea of standing up an employee resource group, what would that look like? What would what would the the employees need and or want as a part of the city? Uh so so that's but that's a part of our plan is standing that up. And then I would just say uh at the very, oh, one too many, sorry, at the very end of it, we'd like to work towards departmental equity and inclusion action work plans, right? So what happens in Parks and Recs, I don't know if Matt back there, and what happens in uh police and what happens in fire and what happens in economic development, they're going to have different opportunities to advance equity and inclusion across the work that they do, the programs and services. So we really wanna be intentional about saying, hey, we do these things and these are really great, but we also really wanna challenge ourselves to advance equity and inclusion in these areas, right? So have work plans dedicated to what does it look like, what does it mean to advance equity and inclusion in their specific departments. So that would be kind of what we'd be working towards over the course of time and then continuing to um reevaluate and assess and where are we really doing great and where do we have opportunity to continue to improve? And and continue to to like really lay some good stuff in 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 the organization across it, across these few groups, so.
And the one thing that I would add is that this is kind of the overarching vision, so when we talk about the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan, that's a piece of this. Um whatever that that um progression is of what we look at, if there's a two point O, but this is really ways that we can integrate it even deeper into our organization. Um so each of these have a role to play and they kind of fulfill different areas of how we can make sure that equity and inclusion is really impacting more than just maybe those three problem areas that we talk about in our SREAP.
And I would imagine there's a fair amount of overlap as to who's participating in these various areas, especially at the staff level.
Absolutely. So as we talk about the purpose and role, we wanted to give you some space to have a conversation about what is the purpose and the role of this group look like in your eyes as folks that are representing the community here, right? So uh so we'll give you some recommendations on kind of what we've thought about makes the most sense and then we'll hold some space for you all to have some discussion about that, so that's kind of our next step here. So the purpose is the Roseville Equity and Inclusion Commission acts in an advisory capacity to the city council and city staff to apply an equity and inclusion lens to city policies, procedures, projects, programs and initiatives.
So the one thing that I just wanted to point out here is when we kind of are writing this, we're writing this in a traditional commission structure type words. Um we we know that there are conversations that we'll have later on based on the structure of this this group, whether it's gonna follow kind of a traditional commission structure, whether you guys wanted to mirror something more along the multicultural advisory commission model, a hybrid, something to that effect. Um so just know that the language in here is just a kind of a draft statement in that commission structure language, um depending on which route you go, things may need to be tweaked a little bit. And again, the Equity and Inclusion Commission is that placeholder name, we had to call it something, so.
I think it sounds very good, I think it includes what I think people want in the city. It sounds to me like it's including what we've been discussing for the last year and it gives enough leeway in the phrasing of city policies, procedures, projects, programs and initiatives that people that have been on the commission would understand that those things are valued.
I think uh that's, I would say the same thing and I think that while it it has the leeway, it's mainly because it's a purpose statement, you don't want it to get into the nitty gritty details at that level. Uh but I think it does provide that framework for then what kind of the rest of whatever that document, if it's a if it's a commission code or whatever it is, can can fill in more. And I think that seems to be the kind of thing that we wanna be talking about as part of this discussion this evening at at some point is is that how the rest of it kind of looks and even if that isn't actually hopefully uh writing language here around this table, it can maybe at least give give some points that can ultimately be used to put that together as a follow up to this discussion, so we don't have to be perfect wordsmiths as we contribute to our conversation.
I I appreciate um that it specifically mentions um to city policies. Um I've long looked at the request for council actions and the racial equity impact summary on each and wish that there was a bit more um input from said commission of X name um that they would um have somehow maybe taken their voices with that intent of looking at that and truly not just kind of generically saying, no, no equity concerns, but really applied equity concerns to these policies. I appreciate when those are there and I I want them to really be meaningful parts of our policies and things that we consider and that they have had thoughtful consideration from the equity point of view. And um I know that it wasn't always as, it hasn't always worked that way, but I I think in a in my mind, if it was, things were working well, that they would have had some kind of voice to that um piece and and offered, especially things that are potentially um really looking for reflective voices of more than just one or two city staff, not to diminish, but the more voices on some of the relationship.
And maybe just to add to that, cuz I was thinking the same thing and I know that's been a topic of conversation around this table both as a council and and with the commission. Um and I think from a practical point of view, perhaps it would be a challenge for every single request for council action to be pre-reviewed by a commission that meets monthly, but it probably makes sense to be sort of a feedback loop mechanism as the commission, so we can say, you know, here's the here's the last month's worth of or whatever, last time period's worth of sort of the ru- routine run of the mill RCA's request for council action and you know, provide feedback that can then be used to do a better better implementation in in the future uh so that so that uh everything the city does doesn't have to funnel through that that one commission, which I don't think was what anybody was suggesting, but that was to me seemed to be a mechanism that that work might work for that. Uh but on the flip side, certainly if it's a new policy that the city's putting in place, I think it does make sense to sort of have that pre-review of what the impacts are and and figure out maybe how that works and is that an extra step in the decision-making process that's built in? Or what does that look like, but uh and I don't have ideas for that for sure, but but I can see where it could kind of be both, it could be sort of feedback on what has been attempted and iterate and then also kind of in, you know, upfront feedback on on new things that we're looking at and and I don't know that we need to define exactly how that looks tonight or, you know, immediately, but I that's just sort of has been my thought process and certainly I'd love to hear from others as well.
Look, one of the things in having many conversations with current and former members of the H R I C and other uh folks in our community, this and hearing from the H R I C, people who are currently seeing it, this actually is a much more focused thing, but allows more depth. Is that fair? You know, when we talk about what is it looking at, it allows depth on something that I think is really important and that multiple people said this is like, yeah, we should be focused on this, we should be focused on this. So I think it clears away some of the clutter and confusion of of what is currently uh before the H R I C um and provides a real focus and a focus on something that is critical to our future here.
Yeah, I actually was gonna say something similar to that where it's very clear, but still broad at the same time. And so I think that was one thing uh we were hearing very clearly from the different people we talked to was they wanted it to be much more clear was what they were going to be working on. And um and I also liked um, you know, what you were both were saying earlier about making sure that this is something that's going to be um, they're going to in, they're going to really have some passion around it, but then also that it'll get a lot of work done. And I think that was the other piece is they felt like they weren't getting things done and I think this is um helps sho- show them the direction, but again, broad enough, so then when things come up, it still will be under this umbrella. So um of course, I've been working with the group on this for a while, so I guess I've had an opportunity to look at it a number of times and I I do like it.
And it's probably important to say that this is, to me anyway, very reflective of what we heard back through this process.
Right.
Um and so if it wasn't, I think that would be a a point of having some further discussion, but I think it, you know, it seems that that we're all sort of there at saying that this is actually reflective of that, so I think that's important to acknowledge as well because a lot of work got us to this point in that regard.
So so to your point, in terms of where the specifics will come, I think that's uh looking at some of the scope and duties, at least on kind of the beginning piece, right? I think this will be something that will continue to evolve as our work grows. As we know, over the last couple of years, we just talked about the change in the housing study, right? And we know that this work changes so rapidly as we're talking about equity and inclusion. So I think on the initial uh the initial piece here, the recommendation is is that this team will focus on supporting the equity inclusion work plans that we talked about. That'll be, there'll be one for the entirety of the organization and then one that'll be a little bit more specific to the departmental level. And then also the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan, right? As a part of the the broader work that we're doing around equity and inclusion, where that SREAP is really important, so we're gonna continue to pull that through as we talk about equity and inclusion across this organization. So that's where the the initial focus would be for this group is to work in those two areas. And and that's a lot of work, y'all, to to talk about doing equity and inclusion work plans for, you know, each department in this organization, it's gonna be a lot of work and we're gonna need a lot of partnership and a lot of support from community and a lot of uh uh support from our leaders to be able to do that, so this is not, it may look small, like it's only two things, but this is gonna be a really big lift, so. Uh that's where we 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 thought we'd spend most of our time in the onset. And then uh we talked about the Equity and Inclusion Action Team, which is going to be a learning and development place for uh many levels of our organization, across every area of our organization. We'd love to bring a couple of members along on that journey with us and really embed them in the process in terms of um, you know, how do we look at, how do we advance, how do we focus and lead with an equity and inclusion lens in the city of Roseville? And we want community to be alongside us on that journey, one to learn with us, but also to tell us like, yes, we're going in the right direction. So those are the kind of the three things that I think on the beginning of this group, we'd be focused on how do we embed it in the organization.
And the uh piece that I would add is we were pretty intentional about the the wording that we used on reviewing and providing feedback. Um depending on what form of, what format of the group you take, um that may be, may have some legal implications, we talked about um what that might, may or may not look like depending on which model you go with, um but making sure that they understand what that role is. So they are to review and provide some feedback, um meaning that it kind of originates from either council or staff and then they, I mean, obviously out of that feedback and the reviewing ideas can come forward and and pop up, but it's really um that was the intention behind those words there.
Does the, is the thought that that um the departmental equity and inclusion plans that were the top dot on the on the arrow diagram are something that that either eventually gets into this as well? Or is is one of the things that is maybe that the Equity and Inclusion Action Team piece?
Um it's actually the Equity and Inclusion Work Plan, it's the it's the work plans, yeah. So that that top bullet point is what that is referring to.
Excellent, I guess I didn't have the word departmental, so I wasn't making that connection, sorry about that, appreciate that.
Any comments or thoughts you wanna share on on scope, the duties?
Wanna specify something around city operations and policies, that's the number three, or can it get us further in?
Yeah, um we 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 can do that, I think what, under the purpose, um we had talked about maybe adding that we didn't wanna get too wordy, but we could definitely put it under the scope and duties if that's um the appropriate place.
City operations and policies.
So we have city policies in there and procedures, is that the same thing?
In the purpose statement, in the purpose.
Oh, you're saying add it into the to the next level.
To the scope and duties.
Yeah, 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 I think I think that was something I was looking forward to.
I just wanted to note that this is, this is a big difference. By taking that word engagement out, we have this commission that's kind of like, are we intern, are we internal looking, are we external looking? And of course, there was always that dichotomy and confusion on what, but this is a very internal looking place and so it does definitely, yeah, it does focus everything quite well, but it possibly is a different type of person who would find this um of value to them. Um it's much, it's probably more theoretical because it's not going out and, you know, standing at the front of the parade and, you know, glad handing people, so that certainly would help when people have a better understanding, but I think the biggest thing is I see, especially on that um that arrow, is that the goals clearly are um to the organization and not to the public. So I think that's the biggest thing is that you're not taking the public and trying to figure out how to, not so successfully most of the time, figure out how to bring that back in. You're trying to bring, you are the public coming in to help try to figure out this internal plan. So I mean, I think that's just the biggest thing is if in the scope and duties, it's clear that it, that that big change um from it being an ambassador to being, being the thinking. Being the thinking, you know, being the thought pool that is is drawing from your knowledge to create something.
And it's probably worth saying too, that I don't think we're saying that there isn't sort of an ambassador role that can be a part of what the city does. And I think there's already been some conversations about what that can look like, and so folks that are interested in that area hopefully can find a way to make that connection. It just may not, it's not through this specific mechanism.
Actually, in the scopes and duties and what they have in the packet says may represent the city at events or appropriate and approved by city staff or council. So there is some.
Right, but it's not sort of that out there trying to to engage in a in a similar ambassador way that I think was being discussed by the commission.
And to be honest, I think that has been um a big push-pull on the commission. Um people who are the the ones that really want to be out and engaging with people and 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 then people who want to do more of the. Review and provide feedback type thing, so trying to capture that all in one group has been um kind of difficult. And so as the mayor alluded to, um there are some conversations occurring on ways that we can get those who are interested in being. The ones that are out engaging, um doing something uh uh in a different role, a different scope for that. And then using this group as more of that providing feedback and review. Um so we we we're kind of trying to focus on one and then we'll get the other one going, but we do have some some thoughts on that as well as we move forward that we can. We can share in a future meeting too, so.
It's important to note too, that while this group is focusing on this organization and our policies and procedures and actions and what we're doing. The whole purpose of this organization is to serve the public, to advance public interest in the community within the parameters of a city and what a city does. And so ultimately, that is what we're trying to do, and I think the key part of it that this group can help with. Is to make sure that as we're doing all the things that we do as a city, we are addressing those equity and inclusion areas. Equally appropriately and and effectively um as we go forward. So once again, while it has that internal organizational focus, it still is ultimately providing a better product for the community, if that's the right word for it. Uh in terms of what the city will be doing and how the city does its business, which has that impact on the community.
I sort of look at this as um, I understand the ambassadorship part that we've talked about, but there was also frustration with that. Because many of the people I talked to said they didn't really know why they were doing that booth or, and so I, what I see this as is focusing in it. Yes, it is internally focused, I agree with some members drawn, but I think that through that, we might be able to broaden that part of it through the programming and the other parts. Further on, when we all are comfortable with what that is, so.
Well, that's a good point, because I think we're still wanting to make sure we do a better job of engaging the public in our decision-making and in their government. That's that's acting on their behalf and affects their lives. And so that, it's not like the city is saying, we're not gonna do that anymore. I think, you know, what we're saying is that it doesn't make sense to try to task this group with that. Until we kind of figure some other things, and not 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 this group until, but until we figure out what group or who should be doing that and how.
Well, and and this group could be the ones that say, have you engaged this this group, have you engaged this group? And making sure that we we are being accountable to making sure that that happens while they're reviewing things, you know, hey, you're looking at this policy or hey, you're looking at this, you know, changing these services. This is gonna impact this group, or I know it's gonna impact people I know, so maybe you make sure that you're you're working. So there is that engagement piece that they may not actually necessarily be the ones going out to, you know. Do the engagement, but making sure that, because engagement can be very difficult also. Um but making sure that they hold the city accountable as well to making sure we're doing that.
Uh I think we just, it just speaks to, you know, there are five of us who represent the city, but there's all these other lived experiences that aren't reflected here at the table. And just because there can't be, there, every person has their own unique journey, and so if we have more eyes and ears and um. People who bring their lived experience to that table and can bring that to the policies, they just bring one added little. Fiver of something different that maybe someone else didn't, I mean, it it's often funny how each of us have our different thing that we talk about and. And yet we kind of, oh, you know, well, I won't worry about that, Robin will get that, you know, like. So I won't worry about that finance part, and if it's around real estate, but you know, like I I don't have to like, she knows it better than me, so I I won't worry about that. You know, so I think anything like that, we we can be stronger by having that opportunity, but I do appreciate having. But be really clear about that focus, like it's not that engagement, it's not that outward looking. This particular group, whatever it's called, whatever it is, is about being internal and making what we all produce. I rely on these commissions, at least I hope to, as the experts, we can't be the experts in our time on everything. So if we have someone else who's really taken that perspective, then, you know, I can who, but I can only go through my own lived experience.
Well, I think you make some really good points there, and I think it was, it's a very good point to point out, it's not the ambassador part. So when this group is being built, then we're clear on what what we want them to do, where I think that's where we had some issue is. People were thinking that that's what they were gonna do once they got on the commission, and then that's not what they got to do, so I think it frustrated them. So I think it was very smart to make it very clear what it, not only what we want them to do, but what what isn't included at this time, so good point.
Others were, listening to their March meeting was, it was a great learning opportunity, but there are others who couldn't wait to do what we're talking about here, right? But you heard that huge dichotomy of interest and experience and um willingness to take the time, right? So it pulls it apart.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, under the scope and duties, it may make sense to try to express the notion of. Uh providing feedback as to who we should be engaging or who, you know, who should be a part of. You know, the work that we do on a particular policy or a particular procedure or whatever it is, uh without. You know, it'll be tricky wording, of course, to to make sure that we don't make it sound like the commissioners are gonna be doing the engaging. But that they're actually providing feedback to the city about, you know, what engagement is needed or what engagement was missing or whatever.
I think the next slide answers that.
Yeah.
Well, I don't have to dance now, let you.
So talking a little bit about the role, which I think is what we've been kind of discussing a little bit here, is is to really be that partner to the city, right? So so where are we doing really great and where do we have an opportunity to engage those different lived experiences? Cause so many of us are on a very different journey, so are we thinking about those things as we're talking about our work, as we're talking about our plans, as we're talking about the equity and inclusion vision? This group will hopefully be a really key partner in doing that work alongside us and with us as we are in relationship and we're just trying to, you know, advance all the services that we've been talking about.
Yes. I feel like we've discussed that part.
Y'all are way ahead of it here, it's just like, you're you're doing it all.
Does does that get to some of your concern about, so this group will be the ones providing that community input as opposed to seeking community input? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it it the only thing you might be able to do here is to say, um, you know, the vision, the work and the plans. And maybe underwork or plans that includes something to the effect of and and the engagement the city will be using or whatever, you know. Or who the city will be connecting with, yeah, as part of that or something along those lines. But once again, you have to be careful about how to word it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
You lose that word, engagement work for right now.
If there's a better word, there's a better word, I'm happy to defer.
Um so we could talk about um instead of engage, um advising on stakeholders or something to that effect. So we we can, we can work on some language there to kind of not confuse people by using engage. Um but maybe something with um stakeholders or something.
Well, that's a good point, cause actually in the in the ICMA spectrum of engagement, there is specifically a step called engage, so yeah.
It's almost more like being a liaison, isn't it?
Well, I think it's more like they're just helping the city make those connections to stakeholders and identifying perhaps stakeholders that have not been. Perhaps considered or don't appear to be as part of what's being presented to the commission.
I just wonder if things like that would come on a future thing that flushes out some of the specifics of this work. Right now, this is kind of high level and to, once we get into that, it gets muddier and muddier. Um there's a lot of clarity here, I would put it under work, I agree, but that vision would include, the SREAP would include, right? And then work, we talk about that, I don't know, right, so.
I was trying to find the ordinance that we adopted about the new uh commission code, so I could see how it was formatted for other commissions. Because I think that's exactly right, that's where it should be, but somewhere in there.
Yeah, and once we have kind of consensus on this direction, what we'll do is depending on what format the group comes in, whether it is. We put it into the ordinance language or whether we do it by resolution, um because the the code does state that council may form other groups by resolution. Um so depending on what format you decide on, we'll work on some draft language and bring that back as well, so.
Questions or thoughts here? Good.
Good.
All right, so we were gonna hold some space now to ask you all just general feedback on purpose and role, but I feel like we've been doing that along the way, so. This is that space and our time, that if you had any around purpose and roles and some of the stuff that we talked about, scope and duties, if you had any last thoughts, otherwise, yes.
I do, in that um, so. On the future agenda item, which has been there for a long time and seems kind of off in its own right now. I had indicated at one point an interest in having a sister city relationship with an indigenous tribal nation in Minnesota. And the reason that I presented that was because of the Kaya Park naming. And it really comes back to what you were talking about, about building more authentic relationships. It was about not just finding a Native American expert who will tell us for this one-off what we wanna do. When other organizations have, you know, land acknowledgements and things like that, it seemed like a more authentic way to interact with our city. With a some uh group of people who may have originally inhabited this land. It was more an idea of something that was really authentic in creating that relationship and having, not just seeking. I'm gonna grab you for free knowledge, Wayne, tell me everything about real estate, cause you're here, you know, like, there's a give and a take. Like, we we get and give from each other, whatever that relationship is, and so. I don't know if that fits into something like this, but originally I had thought that it would live in this type of space because I wanted there to be more. Relationships around, not just using someone for their knowledge, but actually having something that we. We shared in that space and I don't know that in this new format, that would be the right direction. And so maybe this isn't something that would ever come to fruition and sister cities are kind of a thing of the eighties, but um. But also, I don't know in our world that we ever can have not enough um connections to meaningful relationships to other organizations. But, you know, I, that was kind of what I had thought of, and I'm not sure it fits into here, but I still think there's an opportunity to create authentic relationships. With those connecting groups, whatever those are, so if there's someone who's on the um group X. Um eh and not after that former social media group, um that um. That they had a connection to the current um, the current, you know, population, or they were a renter. Or, you know, when we did the demographics of the people on commissions, it was pretty s- pretty specific. There was a lot of very homogenous type folks, because it's hard for people who are struggling or who are renting or who. Have multiple jobs to find this to be in their their wheelhouse of things to do, but, you know. I still think there would be an opportunity for us to try to create more authentic relationships. That just being a symbol of what I thought maybe something that could do, and that was very purposeful at that time around the Kaya Park piece, and it's still kind of sitting on the future agenda. But it was more to really have those authentic relationships that were more long-term and more about. Maybe that's more of that engagement piece in the future, not sure if that fits here, but that was kind of. That was my idea of what a perfect HRIC, but I don't know that that fits into what this group is. I think this group, I really like that they would be policy-focused and that they would review and give us. Feedback if we, you know, pick this tar company now to do the road reconstruction and we missed a big chunk of something really important, like, hey, why didn't you? Find, you know, seek out this Native American uh organization down the road that could have, you know, art, you know. I appreciate that other idea too.
Let's take that back.
Yep.
Talk about it.
Well, I think that, to your point, I think you're talking about just in general, having better connections between. This organization and, you know, communities in Roseville that aren't always at the table. And and I think that that, that is very much a part of Antonio's role, and I think that's very much a part of Cory Youngkey's role and everybody's role. You know, and I think we just need to figure out how to start establishing and maintaining some of those relationships and who should be involved or who can be involved and how do we do it? And I think you're right, that it probably doesn't have a fit exactly with this commission, but I think this commission can provide some insight, and I say commission, I mean this group. Can provide some insight uh to help inform that policy or procedure of the city in that regard, if that makes sense.
I I appreciate that call out though, and I think it's something that we've talked about quite a bit, Rebecca and I, and so um, I appreciate it.
Other thoughts that you wanna share before we move on to the kind of the next section or? Okay, we can keep moving then.
So the next part is really gonna talk about some of the format, so uh what we wanted to do was was just kind of highlight. From perspectives and conversations that we've been having around commissions, um like like what are the benefits, right? So when we think about these groups, what are the things that like, we were saying, let's go with a commission, here's the things that make sense for it, and if we go with a commission, here's the things that. Are maybe barriers and or challenges to some of the stuff you talked about, right? So obviously on the commission side, transparency and familiarity, right, like we all know what a commission is, we know. We know its purpose, we know what's gonna be established, we know all the things that we know, because it's just what we know, we've always done it that way, right? And then transparency, obviously tons of benefits there, like there's publicly noticed meetings and agendas and video recordings. So that kind of goes along with the familiarity of the commission, but it's it's very much like, these are the things that we know, we know.
I just wanna add another one that we heard um come up from one of the HRIC members on the benefit of commission is doing this work in public, in public space. That this is um something that um is demonstrated, whether it's messy or not messy, that it's part of the process. So I just wanted to highlight that, because that was also something that um I know the HRIC wanted, had a conversation on. So that, I just, sorry.
I appreciate it, it's good, it's good stuff. Um now, on the opposite side of that, some of the barriers that I think present themselves for a commission are a little bit of a lack of flexibility, right? So like, we have to come into city hall, we have to have the meeting scheduled ahead of time, and we've got to, look at my notes here, the membership stuff, right? So in terms of how do you apply to be on a membership or how do you apply to be on a commission, there's just lack of flexibility with the process in and of itself. Um lack of accessibility, I think that, you know, in terms of like how uh, there was a small thing called the pandemic that we all dealt with. And it taught us how to do work in different ways and and we learned how to leverage technology, even at any agency across this. Across the metro area learned that, and um and so we got pretty good at it, right? But but the commission may not have that accessibility, right, you gotta be in person, you gotta sit here at the table across from folks and have those conversations. And then um application, right, so we're talking about again, how do you join a commission, it's a very formal process and it's very much like. It's government-y, right, to use the term, right? And that doesn't always resonate with all parts of our community, as we've talked about, right? The folks that that maybe don't have high trust with the government, not because city of Roseville is not great, but just because their past experience. Has maybe harmed them in terms of how do they interact with government, so those were some barriers that we found in terms of thinking about this format of the commission. But also some of the benefits that we found, to your point of doing this work in in public and in front of folks, so.
And I know we've had multiple conversations about some of the other um barriers that we've heard from uh from uh people who have participated or have not participated. Um some of the things that we've heard are, you know, we are subject to the open meeting law, um our commissions have historically been treated as those. Those types of bodies, and so making sure that we have them videotaped, making sure that we have them on a regular schedule, making sure that people have to have transportation to get here. Childcare to get here, they, if they're, you know, at home, um if they have, if they're caring for somebody else, if they've got small children. Some of those things that we've heard um can be barriers to peo- to people participating uh in that traditional commission structure. Um so these are just things, I know the HRIC had brought up, um at one point, they had a youth commissioner during the pa- um shortly after the pandemic. And during the pandemic, that was able to participate remotely, but that youth commissioner was also watching their siblings. And so if they had to come to city hall, they would not have been able to participate. So there's a lot of different situations out there where people may not be able to participate in this structure. And as we know, the structure was set up many years ago in the seventies and and um family dynamics have changed and economic factors have changed. So just wanted to um make sure that we're highlighting definitely the benefits, because I think that there are strong benefits to doing. Just wanted to, um, make sure that we're highlighting definitely the benefits because I think that there are strong benefits to doing this. This work, um, in public and making sure everybody has access to see how the work is done, but also that, um, there may be some limitations on. Who may or may not be able to participate.
One of the things I was thinking about as you were talking about those transportation and childcare issues was that. I guess one could argue that having a predictable, regular meeting schedule could potentially help with that, but it could. It could also be the flip side of that as well, so it kinda works both ways. Um, and certainly, I think from the accessibility and being on 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 camera, so to speak, you know, certainly. We could, whatever format it is, this this group could still have a much more public-facing. Meeting, uh, you know. Approach as opposed to the MAC, for instance, in the, with the police department where it's much more behind the scenes and. Informal and things like that, I mean, we we can choose what whatever we want to do with whatever we set up. Uh, so while that's certainly a benefit of a commission. If we decide to go with the other format, and I haven't made a decision one way or the other myself, um, there's, you know, there's ways to do. Different things with different formats that may not appear under a benefit or a or a barrier.
Would we be able to, um, record, say the meetings were on Zoom, um, in a non-commission. Format, would we be able to record those and have those available on our city website for people to see after the fact?
We have the technology to do so, if that's something, um, that council's desires, I mean, yes, I believe. There wouldn't be any issue with that.
And at one point, I thought they were able to attend by Zoom a certain number of meetings, is that not true?
Uh, that's based on state law, which is they have to have, I think it's a hea- uh, Mayor, look to you, a health, medical.
Yeah, up to three times a year, if there's a, for a medical reason, they're not supposed to be in public. That's for public bodies and by default, we interpret that for commissions as well.
Do we look at the other? Other options?
Yep, we've got a couple other.
So then we talked a little bit about the committee, uh, which is along the lines of the MAC, right? So some of the benefits. Flexibility, accessibility, authenticity and membership, so when you think about, we talked about, can you. Come in virtually, can you be remote and have part of this conversation? Some conversation around, like, if it's not publicly recorded, maybe folks will be a little bit more authentic in the way that they show up and have conversations and. And and be involved in this work, uh, the membership, the membership application process doesn't need to be as formal, it can be a little bit less formal. Um, which may appeal to different parts of our community that have different lived experiences, um, that we could maybe bring into this conversation in place of. A really formal, government-y application process, right? And then I think on the flip side of that, the funny thing here is that the barriers and benefits seem to like be, uh, separate from each other, right? Each one is kind of opposite, but, you know, perceived lack of transparency, right? What's going on if we don't know? Uh, there's a public meeting, right? What are they talking about? What are they doing in that space, right? And then lack of familiarity, we're having this conversation about what does it look like, what is it gonna be, what is it gonna happen, how are we gonna do it? We're 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 not sure yet, right? We don't have all those answers, so I think those are two barriers and a few benefits of having something that's not a commission and more of the committee model.
And I was just gonna add, um, you did a great job, um, some, the piece on the flexibility with a committee, you can, if you meet in person. You could do a hybrid model, um, whereas con- currently structured under our commissions, we don't do hybrid, we don't do Zoom and in-person. Um, in addition to the barriers, I would also put up there that, um, there has been some concern about making sure that this. This group is sustained, so how can we make sure that we continue this work ongoing? Um, so, we'll get to that next piece, um, but there's a way, you can create a resolution. Um, obviously, it probably would be an ordinance because our ordinance is reflective of our our commissions. But it does state that you could create these, uh, groups by resolution, so have that resolution, form a structure, make sure that you are. Continuing to have this, have, I'm kind of getting into the second piece now, I'm so, I'm sorry, so, um.
Before we go on, I have I have a question, probably a legal question. Sorry. In our commissions, we do a background check on people. With the committee, do we have to do a background check on people to do this work?
I think that's a decision that the council could make, whether or not you wanted to do a background check.
Cause I think part of the reason was with your involving youth, that that was why we were doing that, and I know further on, we're talking about having. Youth involved with this, that's why I'm asking.
Eh, and that's a good point, I I think you'd wanna do a little, um. A little research about it, my my instinct is that there's probably a way to avoid the background check. Um, but the other, the other thing, the other consideration for the background check is you wanna be. Careful about what kind of information is shared with the commission, and and that can become an an independent reason to want a background check, but. If if it's important, cuz that obviously is a barrier for people, just don't, aren't comfortable, um. It's something that we can work around.
Just wanted to, cuz that that, you know, I know we talked about the commission, one of the problems was is not being clear about that ahead of time and people would apply. And then they get appointed and then they found out later that they'd have to do a background check versus.
I believe it's it's been on the application for a while that, ahead of time that this is part of it, so. And we're making some even deeper changes.
So I just wanna make sure that we get that figured out, if, no matter what format.
Well, since we're doing legal questions, I did want to, uh, just talk about if we, so if we establish this by resolution. Um, and we we put a lot in the resolution about how it does its business and it starts to look a lot like a commission. I mean, are we going to be ultimately subject to the open meeting law and other things? Because we've set something up that essentially is what is subject to it. We're just calling it something else, um, uh, you know, do you see what I'm kinda getting at?
I, Mayor, I see exactly where you're getting at, um, let me just start from a little bit of the beginning, which is some of your commissions, their work may not actually be legally required. To be subject to the meeting law, open meeting law, part that you, you've decided you want them to be subject to the open meeting law and and at least in part, that's why they are. Um, you would need to be careful about the responsibilities that you assigned to the commission. Um, based on the description that I've seen here, and and Rebecca and I have had a few conversations as well. Um, I I don't think you would need to make this commi- committee. Subject to the open meeting law, but again, it would be the kind of thing that you'd wanna be careful about the level of responsibility that they were given. Um, and then you would probably say explicitly that they're not subject to the open meeting law. And you would then also probably want to, political advice, not legal advice. Um, make sure that there is some level of transparency built into the structure of the commission.
So you make a good point about, eh, maybe we need to look at which commissions are subject to it as well, because that might help with some of the commissions too, I don't know.
And and Mayor, I think that, um, if you wanna have that conversation, we've kind of done a little bit of groundwork on on.
That could be for another time.
Yeah, so if that's something that council wants to look at, we can also bring that back for further conversations.
So a couple things, I I understand that people think Zoom is great and you can get a lot of work done there. I myself do not, I think it's really distancing, I think when we weren't able to meet around the table, I wasn't able to see, read body language, I wouldn't. Wasn't able to see how Jason was sitting with his eye on this G, you know, I wasn't able to see those things and have those interactions, so for me. A totally Zoom commission would be the beginning of the end of this, that's how I see that.
Do you wanna go to the the hybrid? So, this is, this is some, um, thoughts that we put together. That we tried to balance some of the barriers, some of the benefits from each model, um, and so if. Council decided that they wanted to go with the committee format, there are things that you can put in place to ensure that transparency. Um, you can have, you can announce the meetings, you can have agendas, you can do meeting minutes. Um, if you wanted to do the recording, you could do that, so there's things that you can put in place for that, that allows the group to have more flexibility. Um, all the, all the benefits we kinda talked about with some of the, um. The added benefits on the transparency and those other commission structure benefits. Um, and then in addition, we talked about kind of what what does that look like for membership numbers? Um, wanted to keep it at kind of a a reasonable number. Um, you know, too big of a group, it's great to have lots of perspectives, but sometimes it can become. Difficult to g- have everybody get their opportunity to speak, you don't want the meetings to be too long. We're we're talking about maybe eight members with two youth members, um, just throwing ideas out to start with, so, um, what would you like to add?
Yeah, I think, I think what we intended here was to have the best of both proposals, right? We wanted transparency. We wanted to let folks know what was going on, but we also wanted to be accessible. I agree with you, one hundred percent, remote all the time is probably not the way we'd like to do this. But in the event that we needed the flexibility for a member to be, um, participating with us, uh, because. Something came up, they couldn't make it that night, whatever the case is, um, just having the flexibility to be able to offer that and do that. Is something that I think would be great, right? I talked about relationships, I would like for the group to be together as much as possible, but also recognizing that's not always. Accessible for someone that's maybe working a couple of jobs or off hours, right, kind of that evening, weekend shift or whatever the case is, so. I think what I would just highlight here is we wanted something that would meet both of the expectations. Around transparency, commitment to this work, it's not something that's gonna be going away, but also if we needed flexibility to pivot on a meeting. Um, we didn't have to feel the pressure of what maybe was under a commission structure, so we were hoping for somewhere in the middle of both of those things.
I have so many questions, so sorry, um, in this format, would there pu- would the public be welcome to attend then? If there are announced meetings with agendas and the public could. Okay.
I I would say that it's up to the council, I mean, this is gonna be the, what you guys get to create.
Would, and then I was wondering if, um, if that would be, if those members would be appointed. By us, or if they'd be a group created by staff that met, you know, a whole bunch of different pieces. Um, if they'd be voting on anything, um, and if they're not voting anything, would that preclude? Those high schoolers, uh, who didn't live in the city of Roseville, who attended Roseville City High, uh, Roseville High School. From being an active member of one of the two youth, um, so just kind of, I I know that part of it was, um, and that contact. Whether or not the youth could have their, you know, would they get a city email, would, how how connected are they and how accessible are they? To the public, um, so those are my. Things that come to mind.
Um, Councilmember Shorter, I can attempt to answer some of it, but I I would say it is, I I'm sorry, Strawn, my goodness, my goodness. Ah, I apologize, I. Um, but I I will, I can put out what our thoughts are, but this is your your process, you guys get to make those final decisions. Um, our thought was that, um, to make it less, uh, burdensome, maybe it could be staff-appointed, um. But get kind of council input on some of it, um, in addition with the voting, we were talking about reviewing and providing feedback. I don't know that it would be a formal vote, it would be more about taking that feedback, um, and so then we wouldn't have the issue with are youth able to vote or not. Um, and then open to the public, I I mean, I think that can go either way, there there can be some conversations that could be really difficult that. They may not want to, but if you are going to post the meeting, um, if you're gonna videotape it or record it and then post it on the website. I don't know that there would be any difference to allow in public to attend, but if you're just doing meeting minutes, that would be something different. Um, and then with city emails, um, I I think that if somebody doesn't have an email and they want one, w- we can. We can do that if it's gonna help them, um. But if it's not gonna be subject to the open meeting law, I will defer to our our city attorney here, um, maybe personal email is is okay. Or not. I'll take that as an or not. No, I'm, I was thinking, that was my eyes rolling back in my head to think, I don't know why it happens, but, um, I I think if the city had the email. It would be public. Um, so that would be the issue is.
City had their personal email address?
Correct, yes, yeah, so, you know, under the open meeting law, there. A, if you're subject to the open meeting law, then you're required to have contact information that is accessible to the public. So even if you remove that requirement, um, still it's data that the city has and and I. Off the top of my head, I can't come up with a reason to protect it, we can work harder on that, but my first answer is I think it would be public.
Well, and public, meaning available to be requested by somebody with a data request. Sometimes that's an important distinction to make.
So I have a question about if this is required under the open meeting law, is the Human Rights Commission or the New Commission Equity Inclusion. Required to be in open, under the open meeting law, cuz that seems to be one of the main things about flexibility, accessibility, application.
Um, Councilmember, I think if, depending on how, I think we could, if we carefully structured, and and I wouldn't even have to be that careful. The the thing that triggers the open meeting law requirement is number one, are there any public officials on it? So if three of you sat on this commission, well, welcome to the open meeting law, but if you guys, none of you all are on the commission and the the. Tasks of the commission are not to make, um, you know. Forgetting the language.
I am too, I was just gonna look it up.
Um, eh, and not to make a final decisions on city business, then you don't trigger the open meeting law, and that that's why the word advisory is important. So if they're providing advice and counsel and recommendations and things like that, but their decisions aren't. Aren't binding and can't be binding, um, then the open meeting law isn't necessarily triggered, again, we'd wanna look at what what you create. But I think that we could create something that would not be subject to the open meeting law.
Just on that, is it fair to say that we have been erring on the side of? You know, making sure everything falls under the open meeting law with our commissions the way they are structured now? Because, I mean, not a lot of our commissions make any final decisions, almost everything is advisory and recommended to the council. But we say they're all subject to the open meeting law right now, and it makes people extremely nervous and tense about their service. Because we scare them.
You are not alone, uh, uh, most, most cities that create commissions have them subject to the open meeting law. So this is not, you're not in a unique circumstance, there are, I mean, for example, the planning commission is subject to the open meeting law. But, um, and and civil service might be, um, but eh, you know. I think that we could structure things in, for these kinds of committees, so they would not be subject to the open meeting law. We can also go and look at your other commiti- commissions and see if that's something that, uh, particularly for these hybrid reasons and things like that, that. That the council would like to maybe on a case-by-case basis determine which would be subject to the open meeting law.
I'm just wondering if that makes the case for one approach versus another less. You know, if we can s- call it a commission and it's not subject to the open meeting law, then maybe. That's okay, because now we've removed the issue of remote participation, you know, we've we've removed the the issue about communicating outside of meetings and. You know, serial meetings and all those types of things, um, and s- but there are still aspects of commissions that we set up in our code. That are, that are maybe still perceived as more restrictive or whatever, so.
I I will say, Mayor, eh, looking with a with a long lens, if you, if I, if I might, look with a, looking with a long lens. It is pretty neat to have, you know, orderly, neat and orderly to have a commission. Sort of have certain universal applicable regulations, and if you're gonna, eh, like the open meeting law. And if you're going to take away that kind of a regulation and not distinguish in a meaningful way, ten years from now. When nobody knows why that happened, it 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 could easily, mistakes could get made. With new assignments being given to commissions that then would trigger the open meeting law, but it just might not occur to anyone. To do that review as that's happening, so, I, it it, as your legal counsel, it makes me a little nervous. It doesn't mean you can't do it, but I just wanted to articulate that.
So we ju- I think it just sounds like we need to be very explicit in however we're approaching it with respect to that.
Um, I I I think that brings up one of the things I heard from some of the. Thinking about former members of the HRAC for some, and then some people who are in the public who were not part of the HRAC. In that one of the considerations for having this is not a commission. And not a commission that's videotaped, is that it allows for more frank and open conversations. An example was given to me as a member of, uh, the MAC who has. Legal trouble in their past, was able to freely talk about that in what they consider to be a safe space. And soon as we start videotaping, as soon as we make it open meeting law, that becomes not a safe space for that person, and they can't share that. When they're talking about, hey, how does this, how does this regulation affect people who've had experiences like me, at some point, they're gonna wanna be able to talk about. The the exact experience, and it may not be something they want to have video videotaped. And so we lose that benefit, just listen, this isn't for me, but the the the, this is what I heard from a few folks. Um, who said, hey, this is, this is something that really changed how I could talk and how I could operate. Um, so I think for me, that's a really important thing to consider, we look at a commission, and if we do a commission. Then I think we can't get, we can't get into exceptions to the commission code, or it gets super messy, um, so then they're interviewing in front of us. They are gonna use Robert's Rules of Orders, and on we go through it, and that can be fine, we know what that is. But I think then we start stilting and making the space less comfortable, when people are really concerned about. Open meeting law, what can they say here, what can they communicate with other people, that we start putting the bars around that group of people again. That maybe aren't allowing us to get the people. That maybe aren't allowing us to get the people we really hope to have. Or to allow them to really fully participate in a way that is so useful for us. Another thing I wanted to say is, I, I appreciated, uh, Councilmember Strawn's point about internal focus, others agreed on. That for me, part of the reason this would be different is because of its extreme internal focus. And it's really thinking about how to, how does the city operate? How is it, what are the city policies, um, that we're reviewing and things like that versus? Hey, when we rename this park and we bring in the public, right? Versus that very public output that a lot of our commissions have. Um, and, and public facing things. So for me, um, those are things that are really important as we think forward about. Why I would lean away from a commission and it's not about me, but about the feedback I've heard. And, um, and why I think a distinction here is that internal focus. Why a committee kind of, uh, approach makes more sense for that and is a clear distinction. Line in how these groups would operate and what they would do for the city.
I think my biggest concern though is that it gets too loose and that there's no continuity and there's no. Because I know that, um, given changes in the MAC or in the police department and, um. You know, having different staff leave and move and stuff, that it has kind of had fits and starts and I, I want. For the continuity of the people who are involved, you know, an opportunity for it to be successful and. Cause we're also setting them up for failure if we're not providing an opportunity for it to be consistent. And so, um, I, so I agree that, you know, setting up a regular meeting and people. Are a lot better off when they know this meeting is, you know, the third Tuesday than if it's, well, sometimes it's Tuesday, sometimes it's Friday. You know, you know, like, like people need that consistency. They might not always be able to make it. But I want them, there also being an expectation that they're part, you know, you're making some type of commitment. It might not be. Um, that same level of commitment of a, a commission. But, um, my understanding from the MAC is that it, it's a, may, maybe more loose than what we want here. So it's almost like the hybrid is something that's a third piece that's in the middle somewhere. That has some elements of that more formal commission, but also has the opportunity to. Create those relationships which you're not gonna create if it, some people are on Zoom sometimes and some people come whenever they come and. That's part of why this commission hasn't been functioning. They haven't had that continuity of purpose and. And I mean, I really wanna set them up for success. And so, yes, creating the right format, but I don't know if either of the formats presented is really what we need. I feel like there's some, something else.
I do just wanna know, I, I, they've been functioning, you know, it's not that they haven't been functioning. Yeah, there's definitely been challenges.
Yeah, no, I, and I, I say that internally to, as far. We see the people come to us as they leave before their term is up or they don't seek second term. When in other commissions, we've seen much more continuity of folks. And just in frustration that it doesn't succeed in the ways they had hoped. Could be their own perception of what they had anticipated it to be. I think it's just. You know, I don't wanna be a measure in futility and continue to put people in a position where they won't succeed. I really wanna help them. Have a reason.
I really actually agree with you and I actually think some MAC members, I know you thought I had my hand up for other reasons, but I agree with you. That some MAC members would agree that, um, and actually they're working on some more structure right now. Because of some of the things you've talked about. So I think that any group that we have should have a little more formality to it in the application process. But if they're working with, uh, uh, applying to, uh, Mr. Montez and some of, some of our, of our staff. Versus sitting here, if they are, um, they have a regular meeting, but if it needs to, they can flex it, right? But regular meetings, everyone, almost everyone operates better when they know they can predict, they can try to adjust. But if they can't, then yes, they can be online. Um, so I, I agree with that and having some formality to how is the meeting even run? But we don't need Robert's Rules of Orders.
Nobody uses Robert's Rules.
Well, yeah, we, we waive that every year, but you know, we don't need like a gavel and, you know, whatever else, right? That, that there's the, the ability to have that flexibility, but with more structure. I think you're right.
I would also like to add that I would really, I think what I've heard is that the staff member is often disengaged in what the commission is. And I feel like it, it would benefit us if, um, there was staff involvement because. I feel like you know oftentimes what the goals are. It doesn't have to direct the meeting, but I feel like it would be really nice if there was. Um, if it wasn't totally hands off and maybe that's never been the intent and that's just a perception of the, some folks, but. Some folks have just indicated, well, they're not involved at all. And I think. I, I'm really hopeful that you bring your expertise to that table and that you help guide folks who maybe. Haven't been trained in as many ways as you are to define, um, some type of end result.
Yeah, I, thank you. Um, I think that, uh, from what I'm hearing. Um, I've kind of only heard from you guys, maybe the others can weigh in as well, but, um. Looking at setting up some distinct parameters for this group so that there's structure to it. So there's a regular meeting schedule so that maybe there's, um, agendas or there's structure to. Agendas and minutes. Um, and then looking at, you know, what does that commitment to the membership look like is? We, we had talked about having a two-year commitment rather than a three-year commitment. Um, then talking about what that membership number is, if youth are available. Um, and then in addition, I think the conversations we've had is, um, staff would really like to look at this group as a partner. In the work that we're doing, so that it's not necessarily always. The group is, is, um, giving their feedback, but we're maybe giving them some information. So a lot of it is. There's some learning opportunities that we've talked about, getting people up to speed, bringing in people from different departments so they know what's going on in different areas. Um, so that it's, it's more rounded rather than just, we're gonna focus only on. The staff in administration who are gonna be at this, this table with them, but really getting them involved in the different areas of the city. Um, and if the, if the council is leaning more towards that committee version, um, in that resolution. That you want to, that you would use to create that committee is where we would lay out those specific parameters. Um, and so just kind of opening it back up, is that, is that kind of the direction the council is leaning towards? Would you like to?
I'm very concerned about removing it from commissions. I probably would vote against that. Um, I think this is great right now. You guys are all on board with it. Five years ago, we'll have different people in those seats. They could care less about it. That committee will disappear. The commission is not so easily gotten rid of. So I, that's why I would stick with the commission format. Now, the bad part of course is that it doesn't sound like it gives you the information you want or need necessarily and it doesn't work as well that way, so.
Well, certainly, I think we could start as a commission and we could evolve if we need to. That's one way of dealing with it, cause we don't know for sure. We don't know what we don't know, I think, at this point. Um, that's, you know, and I'm not saying that's where I'm at, but that, that might be one way to kind of feel our way into it. You know, and see if some of the concerns we think about are actually, you know, turning up. You know, you could also start as a committee or a hybrid and, and see how that goes. I, I would say if we have an action by a council to pass a resolution to initiate something. It would be, uh, it would be problematic for that thing to go away without further action by the city council. Um, as has been said before, I mean, the one, a, no question, an ordinance sort of is that permanent thing. A resolution isn't that far away from it necessarily, but, um, you know, that being said.
Well, and I think, I think the transparency thing is very important. I know, understand some people are uncomfortable probably being on camera. And especially in this commission, but, um, if you, you use the word secret and I really do feel like the public is going to look at. This is a secret, uh, organization we have within the city. They won't see, unless we do a lot of public information out there. Have to be articles, it would have to be why, cause otherwise I don't think this is going to be looked at as a commit, nobody knows about the MAC very much. The, the group that works with it does. But the rest of the, if you go on Doorknock, they don't know what the MAC is. I, I, I think secret group is a little far and I, I would pick up on your thing that maybe it doesn't get the staff the information they need. So I wouldn't wanna create a new group that isn't getting us where we wanna go. And that if we have some of that hybrid model posting agendas and, and having meeting minutes afterwards and things that that. There is that sense of, we should be regularly seeing these. Uh, we still have like the, even MAC came and met with us. Um, you know, once a year, right? So we have a yearly meeting with the group. There are ways to keep that as part of our formal process. While getting what I think, um, is the most robust information we can get. The most important feedback and, and, uh, authentic feedback. That's, for me, that's, if we're not gonna get what we want out of this, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot from the start again. Well, part of the problem with this one is that it's also people that have been discriminated against in the past. So they have been told to be quiet in the past. They've been made to be, if you're invisible.
Sure.
So when you have that, it's, that's why I say secret, that, that's why it's even harder for this. Yeah, visibility.
Of a commission. I did wanna just clarify too, I don't know that staff is saying if we're in a commission format, you're not gonna get what you need. I, I just wanted to make sure that, that sort of was put out there, but I, I, I don't think that's, that's what I was hearing as part of this. It was, we, we get to choose what we want. And it, it theoretically should work either way. Um, as far as getting the information or the input that we want, I think other aspects may, may push at that. You know, like we're talking about here in this conversation, um, and we just have to decide how we wanna do it.
Yeah, I think that's a good point because that we wanna make sure that you guys, the staff would, would get what they need out of this. And so, does it matter which format?
So I think that staff can work with either format. It's, it's going to depend on the membership. I think that's gonna be like the people that sign up, um, making sure that we're representing the people in our community. And all different life experiences. Um, I, I don't know if. And, and I'm speaking from my perspective, other people might have different perspectives. Um, I don't know if having it. Follow the commission structure is going to be the make or break of the group. I think it's going to be the intent, the making sure that the purpose statement is outlined. Making sure that the group is being used appropriately, that, um, the, the intent of how you want to use the group is really there. Um, so I, I mean, I mean, I don't know that there's a, a make or break for this group. I think the work that. Is gonna be done is gonna be focused on the purpose, on the scope, the duties and the roles. Um, and it's, it will depend on, on the membership. So, um, making sure that we get the right people in that group, so.
We should talk a little bit about maybe some of the things we've talked about as barriers, the three-year term on a commission versus maybe two years on a. Or a hybrid, um, the interview process before the council and the application process. How do we feel about those two things in terms of what, what's better for what we want for this, this group? I mean, I'll just say in terms of the, the term, I don't know that, uh, the three-year term has ever. Uh, caused somebody to not leave a commission when they moved out of the city or when their life changed and they needed to do different things or refocus their. Priorities. So I, I struggle with that a little bit. I don't know for sure what's the right answer. You know, ultimately the commitment is whatever people can give us.
I struggle with that because I think that when you start on a commission, there's a learning curve or whatever this is. And so if you have two years, okay, the first year you got your learning curve, then you got one year and then, okay, you're off the, you could be off. I mean, it's possible. Um, so I think the three-year just gives some continuity.
Is it unlimited reappointment capability or do we have to have a conversation about term limits and things like that? So, yeah, you know, we would have to have that.
Cause we've had two in the past, right? Reappointment to one term.
Well, yeah, six years, essentially two, three-year terms, right? And, and then that whole interview process and whether it's a council appointment versus.
That one.
Something else, you know, I, I don't know which is the right way to do it.
I could see, I could see community concern though, if they didn't see, you know. I mean, I have a few members who, if they can't see our whole process and know how someone was selected and everything. I, I, as far as the visibility piece, I wouldn't want someone to also feel like they could be. Falsely looked over, um, you know, because of whatever, you know. If everyone can see the interviews and how they go, it, I don't know, it, that transparency is really helpful for the community to have that opportunity.
I, I think you know how I feel. But thinking about the two years, does two years make more sense? Say you're a renter, you say. Whether people leave or not, people are theoretically looking at whatever that is and they're saying, hey, I'm gonna sign up for. Two years, fine, yeah, we're gonna be here for a while. Well, I don't know, we're gonna, you know, uh, I don't know, but the, the, there's a flexibility. It doesn't have to be a two-year term and you're done. In fact, we wouldn't want that. I agree that over time, some level of continuity and people sticking with the thing for. For a period of time allows them to be more effective, um, and do well. So I would, I would agree with that, but I don't think. Two is about cutting it off, but rather making sure we aren't overwhelming on the front end.
Well, I would think if you went with two years, then you would allow them to have three terms. See, so then you end up with the six total, like we do. So that way you could. If it is two years, you could commit for two years and then if it's all working well, then you can do two more terms after that. That might be a way to handle that.
So the purpose of it is to increase the pool that might be leaving in a year or two or something. Or, or might be in situations that are more flexible and aren't, they look at three years and say.
We have a lot of those people?
I don't know, never heard of it, but, I don't, this is something that came up really with Thomas and, and things like that. That looking at how can we adjust, that, that's for me, is that we've been struggling to find people to stick with the H R A C. For a variety of reasons, right? But we, I feel like we have to be willing to try something different if we want a different result.
And I think the question that comes down to is how much different do we need to go? It's like, I mean, to put it in, in sort of, you know, technical and scientific terms. You, if you change too many variables in your, in your experiment iterations, you don't know which one had the effect.
Are you an engineer?
Um, that's what my degree says, but, um, so I, I kinda, I get, I get that we gotta try some, something different. Clearly something didn't work. Um, so I guess I would tend to lean towards, let's maybe try it as a commission to start with. But, you know, I'm definitely not, that's not ultimately where I have to end up if we see a lot of issues. You know, and there's ways we can communicate to anybody who's interested in any commission. You know, that you don't, you know, that it's a three-year term, but we understand that life changes or whatever, you know, there's ways to kinda. Make it work better for all of our commissions in terms of how we, how we get people in. Or we could change all of our commissions to, to three, two-year terms or something. I don't know.
Well, I don't think that it would stop anyone who want a three-year term from applying for the two-year.
I was gonna say, we've never, we've never had somebody who had to leave in a shorter period of time, be afraid to leave, cause they made that three-year commitment.
But it wouldn't stop the ones who have been volunteering also either, so, yeah, I can go with either way.
I think with the cycle, you know, at least with the three-year, a third go off every year, if, if. It's really hard, you know, cause we would be bringing on a bunch of people all at once. And so we'd have some of them half-term and half, some of them a full-term and, I don't know.
Policy in that, in the commission code, don't we have a policy from when you start a group and how they stay your other terms anyway? So the first group wouldn't be two years and out, so you can stay your how many?
Actually, some people would be three years.
Right, right.
You'd have to do that.
So you could do that, you could do that either format, so you don't end up with everyone leaving at the same time necessarily. Plus we're looking for continuity either way.
So am I hearing that council wants to, to go with the commission structure?
It seemed to have maybe a couple of, of committee and maybe a couple of commission-ish. And I'm not sure where Councilmember Strawn is at this point.
So maybe.
You've, you've been coy.
It might be helpful to kind of talk about the definition of consensus, meaning that. Um, it's something that you don't actively oppose, um, and you can live with. It might not be something that is exactly what you want, but, um, it's always my go-to when I am working with groups of. Understanding what consensus is. Um, maybe, maybe we, um, talk about, um. So the purpose, is there consensus around the purpose of what we talked about? So we understand that the purpose there, um, we talked about the scope, um, consensus around the scope. Um, so maybe the, the last part is that, that format. Um, so. What I hear is that we wanna make sure that it's transparent. Um, I, I heard there was some conversation around two-year versus three-year. Um, I, I think that there might be some concern about having either one commission that's two years and everybody else is three years. Um, would people be okay with, with starting this at, with a three-year term? Um, and then, you know, we could, we can build in a, a review, a check-in with council again. Prior to that three-year to make sure this structure is still moving. Um, or the other, the other option is working on a committee version and adding all those pieces in. Um, making sure that we advertise the meetings, making sure that we publicly notice them, making sure that we have agendas and minutes. Um, we, whatever other layers you want. So those kind of are. So those kind of are the two, is there?
Well, the, you know, really it makes sense to start with the three-year because I remember when we first started the finance commission, I was on that. And you, to have everyone at two years, it's hard again to stagger it. So I think to have the three-year, cause then people actually ended up with two and a half terms and, you know, but I think the three-year then gives a little more flexibility when you're staggering at first and like.
Any format?
You know, and that way then, but, but then when you get into it, then you, as you check back in, maybe then you change it. So, I'm okay with that.
What are we, what does everybody else feel on the three-year term? Is that a good, good term?
I think that's a good thing to start with and then after a year we can review this. This isn't all, all going to necessarily be solid for a while because we're making some changes.
It hasn't seemed like the, the length of term is necessarily a barrier. I think we, we seem to have heard a little bit about that. I'm not sure how representative that is of the whole situation.
We could collect more information. Maybe we'll hear more during that year. If we're more aware, but we can even.
We don't tend to hear it from the other commissions. So maybe, again, as the mayor mentioned, if we don't alter every variable, we can determine if altering some variables. Um, I am not intending to be coy. I, I could live with either, but I would pro, I am pro-commission at this point.
What about, um, maybe, maybe the pieces here will lead us to the ultimate decision, um?
Wait, wait, wait. See, I could live with commission too though. So, so, so do you get that lead?
Close to consensus.
I could work with anything, cause I think it's a much better product. I just think there's significant advantages that we're ignoring. And if we say that this works with other commissions, what do our other commissions look like?
Couldn't that be part of a longer, more?
I mean, that's what we've been struggling with for years, what do they look like? They look like me. They look like us and we keep doing the same thing with the same bars around it and we're expecting a different answer.
But I, I think the point is we'd start there and then.
Why don't we start with a committee and if it doesn't work, then you can put walls on it.
Cause I think that we're talking about all the different variables at once. This was, was, I think what kind of made me think about it a little bit is when they said, how many variables and how do you know what's what, so.
But if we go to a commission, we shouldn't make exceptions, so we have zero variable changes.
Correct. Yes. Other than potentially doing a more, more overarching look at some of the open meeting law questions related to then all of our commission.
Well, and the purpose is changed and those first things that we agreed on.
The purpose is changed, yes, but none of the, none of the other pieces are at all different.
I think a case could be made that a lot of the issues we've had with what, what has gone on with the commission has been because of the code that we have now that just confuses people. There's too many things in it. Everybody's got a different perspective on what they should be doing.
Yes.
If we solve that issue.
Yes.
Perhaps that's the thing we have to do. I think we still, I think we still need to work on making sure all of our commissions don't look like us. In fact, I think we need to continue to work on making sure the city council doesn't continue to just look like us.
Keep trying to know what's.
So, so maybe we need to go to two-year terms on the council and, you know, I mean.
Term limits.
Well, yeah, so I mean.
Brighton.
So, alright.
That's the mayor.
That was just to make up for.
We're terrible.
See what happens after a couple hours.
Yeah, we're not even having alcohol or anything.
Can we get to consensus on the, how we take the next step here? Building around the existing commission structure with, with a lot of reservations, with the new purpose.
That's right.
Well, we changed the name. We've changed the focus. We've changed. Well, we took human rights out of it, at least it seems.
Done anything yet, I don't think.
I mean, but it, but that has not been included in any of the things that we've talked about. So I don't think that's part of.
Probably no objection.
Probably not part of, so we're saying equity inclusion. We talked about how instead of this, we're in and we're out and we're all over.
Visual right there, yes, exactly.
We're, we're an internal focused piece and we're an advisory that is, um, you know, it's a different type of focus on what we're asking the people. That's quite a few variables right there that we've already changed. I think we can come back in six months and say, well, it's after they've met for six months and they've been together for six months. Is it working? I mean, I think we could know more.
Can, can I raise one point as we talk about the commission? Um, currently, commissions are advisory to the city council. The concept, uh, is it, did you change it to include staff also?
Yeah, I have, happen to have that commission code.
So would you be expecting this commission to provide recommendations rather than reviewing and providing feedback? Because other commissions are providing recommendations and that kind of changes some of the scope and duties we've talked about.
I think the feedback.
I wouldn't change the scope and duties at all. I'd leave it what we have here and.
Your uni- uniform commission code says advisory to the city council.
Does say advisory to the city council, but I thought we had added some language about.
Taking it out, cause it was in there.
We did, okay, that was in the, in the, we said advisory commissions and commission members may initiate ideas and proposals for future consideration by their commission and the city. And I think that's where the city rolled into it. But I'll just throw the Parks and Rec Commission out there. I think the Parks and Rec Commission provides a lot of feedback to the staff on parks and recreation matters.
Yes.
Even though they're advisory to the city council under the official language. So I don't, I'm not so concerned about that.
I just, yeah, it's in this purpose statement. That's what they're gonna look at.
Point two.
Have we done it?
Are we okay with following the structure of the commission completely with application, interview, meeting, video, um, meeting schedule, agendas, minutes? There's no changes that you wanna make. I just wanna make sure that we're all clear on that. The changes that you're making are to the purpose, the scope, duties and functions.
I think so.
Okay. Okay, we have one final piece. Um, it's next steps. Um, so one of the things that we have talked about is how do we, since you're changing the purpose, the scope and the duties. Um, one of the things, if you, you, you can jump in here too. I'm just gonna kinda summarize. I know that we're, we're going late here. However, um, one of the things that we've talked about is being fair to the people who are currently on the H R I C commission and making sure that they understand that the role is changing, um, based on your conversation. And so really starting fresh, um, with a new application period, a new group. But we also wanna make sure that we recognize the work of the commissioners that have, um, really laid this foundation. Um, so the, the kind of the next steps that we're talking about, big broad steps, we can get into the logistics a little bit later. But recognizing the, the members of, um, the current members of the H R I C as well as some of the past members, inviting them to maybe come for a recognition before the city council. Um, using that as like kind of the, the endpoint for the Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission. Looking forward, at that point, we could use our current timeframe for our midterm vacancies, open up applications for whatever this group will be called, um, and then really get things rolling. Probably in September is what we're looking at, um, depending on how all that goes. There are some logistics that we'll have to do, is we'll have to come back with ordinance language, um, as well as, um, make sure that we have all that information in front of you. Um, what am I missing?
I don't think you missed anything. You really did a good job there.
I think the last piece, I think, I think you talked about this a little bit, is as we think about the future of this group of folks that'll be in partnership and relationship with us going forward, we really wanted to be intentional about ensuring that the group was representative of our community across all the different identities that make up this rich community in Roseville, right? So like the racial and ethnic backgrounds, orientation, your gender identity, your religion, every, all the pieces. Yes, exactly, right? So all the pieces ensure that those various lived experiences that you talked about at the beginning of this conversation are represented at, at the table and having conversations with us and advising on all the good stuff that we've been talking about.
And maybe that can be a model for how we do recruitment for all of our commissions too. We can, this can be the try for how, how to, first step or first attempt at that. The only thing I would add is that, as I was thinking about it, you know, if any existing commissioners did wanna continue under the new scope, duties and functions, I think I'd be willing to consider that under the reappointment process for those individuals where they would fill out a reappointment application for the new commission.
I don't think we should do it that way.
It's a whole new focus.
I just wanted to throw it out there.
I think everyone should start fresh. We, we wanna, we wanna start with a new thing. That's, that's how I feel about it. And I think this is really.
Tonight, obviously.
No, I think this whole process is really, really important and I think you've done a good job. But I just.
I just had a potential name.
Oh.
I just was wondering if we, if an equity review commission, something that was appropriate. And just taking that from the S R.
We should take that idea and maybe we, whatever, a, a series of ideas.
We can, we can.
I think if it looks too much like H R I E C, that it is, I think it needs, it would be nice if it had its something a little bit. Yeah, it would be nice if it had its own, it's a new identity. That's why I was like, equity review is, they are, we're asking feedback. And it's not saying equity and engagement or, we're not falsely advertising it in the title. Doesn't have to be that. That was the first grove, but I'm just thinking where it's about feedback and it's about review and it's about advising or, you know, something, I don't know. But in, tell what, tell what it's about. Because I think our human rights people kinda got stuck there and never went past it. And a lot of people had really strong ideas of what that meant.
Well, the inclusion part is though, we wanna make sure include everyone in the group, so.
Well, and in what we do.
Yes, you know, so when we're putting it in, I, you know, so I, I did like that, you know, what you had come up with for the, the title of this because I do think we need both of those in that.
E I C just does kind of. Let's, let's put that as something that will kind of take up as, as we consider an ordinance.
We really need to come up with a cool.
Well, thank you, um.
That's the center of this decision is, is cool.
Cause that's what's used the most.
I did wanna just end with saying thank you for, um, all the thoughts tonight. This process gets long, it gets messy, um, and the work around equity, inclusion, diversity, all of that really, um, it is an emotional work, right? And people's emotions go up and go down and they ebb and they flow and that's how the work on, on whatever this group will look like as well. But I do think that the process so far has been really good. I think all of you should be really proud of the process. Um, there was a lot of listening that was done, um, and there was a lot of, um, advising and, and changing and, and everything. So, um, from a staff perspective, this is great. This is, this is the work that we do. And, you know, I've really appreciated being able to be part of this. Um, and so I just wanted to say thank you, so.
One thing that I'm gonna add to our, our time for this this evening and just check with the members of the public, is anyone from the public uh, here to speak to this this evening and want to make a comment about, uh, this that might influence our ultimate decision-making? Anyone from the public? That's not appear to be the case. Alright, well, thank you again to everybody and a special thanks to, uh, current and past commissioners and other people that have been consulted throughout this process from the public. I think that everything has hopefully contributed to, to a, a good, positive outcome for the community, which is what we really want. Uh, and so thank you to everyone for that. And with that, we will take a short break. Certainly come back about eight thirty.
When I stand up, something's gonna pop. I am not. I am not in any way. No, it's over. It's not a small one.
For being kittens that were difficult to herd.
There's more to come.
Just more to.
We're back from a short break here, ready to take up the other fifty percent of our agenda this evening, which is the second business item for discussion, and that is to discuss possible approaches to mitigating the impacts related to the potential loss of Veterans Park with the installation of the Public Works Facility on that side of Woodhill from Seahawk Campus. And with us this evening, we have our Parks Recreation Director, Matt Johnson. I got your name right this time.
Didn't tell him last time.
Oh, there's some other Johnson out there. And really have this opportunity to talk about some possibilities. Just I'll turn it over to Director Johnson to get the conversation going.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, although I hope my item doesn't go quite as long as the last one. My title might win the night for longest potential agenda title. Wanted to come touch base with the Council today specifically at a work session. As we are beginning to have some progress related, obviously, as you mentioned, Mayor, to the Maintenance Operations Center and License Center Project. And with that, we begun to get significant amount of questions from Parks Recreation Commission, members of the community about what, what are you going to do when that park goes away? And so wanted to assure the Council, number one, this isn't new. We've been working on a number of things. But also to touch at a fairly early stage with the Council and get some direction from you as to, hey, this might be a reasonable, reasonable approach or no, we don't like that one. So we can have some guidance moving forward as we look to address the loss of, potential loss of Veterans Park. So this is not new to any of you. I'm going to get my little highlighter up here. As we look to the campus, the proposed pre-designed site plan for the, the Campus Master Plan. It does identify, of course, Veterans Park is essentially there, which would go away as the mayor mentioned. But we do have some green space identified with that pre-design, which is sort of down here where the existing, right now, the parks maintenance garage is. We haven't totally understood what that spatially would be, that would be a final design item or what we could program there. There've been some preliminary talks of like farmer's markety sort of stuff or maybe some small performances. But we're nowhere near ready to know that yet. So what we obviously want to discuss today is, is how we would handle that loss of Veterans Park up there. I'll offer a brief summary of Veterans Park. It's a three point six acre parcel. Our predominant, I would say in the summertime core user group right now is Roseville Area Youth Fast Pitch Association, which is girls' fast pitch softball. They were probably there when you drove up today. They're there almost every night. And it's one of, I guess, three fields that they have full-time access to here in the city in the summertime. Very, very heavily used. It's a good game field for them, both because of the condition, the size of the field and ample parking right next to the field versus some of the Central Park fields cause other problems in that regard. Additionally, our fall soccer program runs from late August through mid-October there. And again, same thing, if you go by any night of the week in the fall, you see little first and second graders running around that site. And if you come by on a Saturday, you'll see first and second graders in brightly colored soccer jerseys running around that site. Two games going on at a time. It's a great site for that again because of the parking and also because of the irrigated turf, which not a lot of our fields do have. So it maintains well through a heavily played summer season and is still in pretty good shape when the fall comes around. To a lesser extent, we do utilize that field for our senior softball program, which is the group of fifty-five plus individuals who play softball Tuesdays and Thursdays in Roseville. Again, predominantly it's Roseville Area Senior Softball Association. In preparation for this, they have moved a lot of their games away, but they do still occasionally use this site. We also utilize it for some of our youth programs, which again is predominantly kicker slugger programs. But a relatively small amount are housed at that site currently, mostly to make way for the Fast Pitch Association and make sure that they have access to that field throughout their entire season. In terms of non-programmed uses, those are sort of the, the, the programs site. There's a half-court basketball court there. There is a playlot and it is open green space, again, three point six acres of space. We do occasionally receive notes of that it is in maybe rough shape, to paraphrase a little bit. And that is somewhat intentional as when these conversations grew legs, we have foregone some capital items there such as replacing the playground, replacing the fencing around the field. Even the half-court is, is starting to see better days and it's just not a wise investment to put a ton of funds into that as we don't know what its future is going to hold. So as we talk about, about what, what sort of our options are, as we start to look at a possibility without Veterans Park, hopefully this isn't new to any of our council members, but this is our constellation and sector map, which is what we utilized. It's what was identified in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan to outline our allocation of Parks and Recreation Services. As you can see, each, each constellation, which this is located in Constellation C, is really geared as sort of an easily walkable area where you can, should have basic neighborhood amenities within. And the larger sectors should have some larger items in there that we don't have, you know, in every single neighborhood in the city. We'll zoom in on Constellation C to sort of have a conversation of what can relatively easily be found near Veterans Park. Howard Johnson Park is, does have a nice playground. Right now, there is not a good sidewalk connection there, but that would be a relatively easy implementation. And my next slide will kick back to the concept planning, which does call for sidewalk connectivity to Howard Johnson Park. And I would think that would be priority A one if we were to look at that as a, as a suitable replacement. There is ample green space at Howard Johnson Park, but I use ample in quotes because I, although I didn't come that way when I came back to the meeting, I am quite sure that there was tons and tons of people on that green space as well. We've had a grass volleyball group that has, has been using that quite a bit, which is amazing to see. Youth baseball plays there. Tennis courts are particularly busy quite often. That's a busy site as well. So again, that could be a playground alternative. As we look at the basketball court, that's not quite as simple of a fix where we have, you have to go over to Applewood Park or Autumn Grove Park for your nearest basketball court. There isn't basketball in Central Park. However, there are additional play structures right down here in Constellation G in Central Park. This again just highlights enough, it sort of echoes the previous slide, which again, there isn't currently connectivity, but it could be done into Howard Johnson Park. You've Cottondale, which is largely nature-based. Autumn Grove is definitely a jaunt from that neighborhood, but it is within the same constellation area. As we talk about consolidation and relocation, we talk about those program spaces. So if you were to say to me, Matt, Veterans Park is closed tomorrow, we need to find locations for these spaces. I'm not going to get too much into the Xs and Os with you because that's, that's not, not something you want to spend time in or is it necessarily something that is productive? But what we would likely have to do is cut down our adult softball team numbers and allocate one of their fields, potentially do some construction on it to allow Roseville Area Fast Pitch to play on the adult fields. That would probably result in a decrease in about ten softball teams, which is, they have an average of fourteen per team. So that's hundred and forty participants in our league that would go down. But that could sort of be handled. As you look at adult, at the youth soccer program, again, we could potentially repurpose that, but it's maintenance-wise very inefficient. We'd have to use some portable nets. We could get by, truth be told, with those programs. The bigger concern that I have as we look at potentially moving around is not the getting by. It's we look at this whole idea of kind of constriction of the Parks and Recreation System. So my predecessor used to frequently say, our park system is so well-used, but we've got a hundred pounds in a fifty-pound bag. Every time somebody comes forth and says, I'd like to have a dog park or I'd like to have a splash pad or we'd like to have mountain biking trails, you're looking at taking out an amenity to add that in. So if we are sort of making do with less park space by reallocating those, those programs, we can do that, but to an extent, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul and that potentially limits us in the long run. And that, that's really what I want to address today. So this is a sneaky slide I added today because I didn't feel I was fully, I, I didn't like my organization, so you won't see this in your packet. But this is just sort of that baseline. It really just speaks to the three approaches that I'm going to talk about in my subsequent slides, just for organizational purposes. The first approach is a small parcel approach and that's, we'll, we'll talk about that, but that's identifying small parcels on the margin where we could replace amenities one-to-one. Second approach is updating existing amenities to add capacity. And the third is potentially identifying creative solutions to add acreage to offset the loss of Veterans Park. The small parcel strategy, as I mentioned, really looks, it's similar to what we have attempted in Southwest Roseville, which is as potential opportunities become available, trying to have some funds set aside to capture them or potentially even proactively approach those spaces to look to place smaller amenities in a replaced way. There are some potential spaces that we haven't really researched yet that could be available. There's been some preliminary just brainstormy talk about the green space near these apartments and looking for that sort of thing. Obviously, this neighborhood is fairly well-built out. So as you start to look beyond that, you start to talk about sites that have houses on them, which are typically very costly and also demolition is costly. Additionally, as you do look at a small parcel approach, they're not the most efficient in terms of maintenance and also for park usage. There's a value to somebody being able to put their kids on the playground and then walk laps around the softball field or go shoot baskets. And as you get to a smaller space, you might be able to replace an amenity one-to-one, but you're not going to be able to holistically replace that park experience. That said, certainly we've seen some effectiveness in small parcels and I wouldn't totally rule it out. The other place I did, again, wanted to tease back to this slide of just, there is some green space also called for within the existing master plan. So if we were to pursue the small parcel strategy, the potential next steps would be again, to identify any potential small parcels that would be available. Identify potential target areas, which would be sort of the bubbles on the map. If something ever becomes available in that area, we're going to pursue it. Develop a budget funding source for property acquisition and parcel development. You will see that bullet point on each of our plans. And I do have some sort of preliminary ideas on where that funding might come from, so it's not a totally blank slate. So don't panic with that yet. But I do want to at least.
He's telling us when to panic.
Yes, exactly. You'll, you'll know. So that, that is one. I, I think the other risk potentially with the small parcel strategy is, again, as we have identified, there is a significant amount of park infrastructure within this area. And I think there could be some feeling of a little bit of tokenism to say, oh, we're going to put a small play site on this small site to replace a three point eight, three point six acre park. And we'd want to be really intentional and engage with the neighborhood before we do anything along that, those regards. The next one is, again, I think a really viable option and is one that I, I know the Council received some feedback, very astute feedback on. My slide actually referenced it and it's, we do have a number of, not a lot, but we have a few spaces that are what I would categorize as underutilized. The most predominant one is Autumn Grove South. This is the more typically programmed area of Autumn Grove. This was a school district-owned parcel that the city acquired a number of years ago. I won't go into the whole history of it, but there was some pollution issues related to the site. They took a number of years for us to be able to utilize it really in any way at all. In twenty, about twenty twenty, we did receive the okay to utilize it on a general level. We did put, we do have some volunteers that put a pump trap here that has been pretty popular actually. And we would be able to remove some of the surface debris. There is surface debris, old bricks, blocks and if, which has a way of pushing up with frost and cause potential issues. So we could do that. As to if we were going to do something more significant, build a soccer field, really make something that was a, a, a higher caliber facility, we would need to do some additional study and probably need to bring in an expert to talk through with the M P C A what is going to be allowed, what's not going to be allowed. Over the past week, I've really gone through and done some digging in those files and it's pretty much one page that says it's okay to use, but they're not really giving authorization beyond that point at this point in the game. There's also some infrastructure issues here that this parking lot at Autumn Grove is regularly packed to the gills. And, but that said, there is street parking around here and as we talk about, almost every time I talk park concepts with the Council, you tend to choose parking or green space. And so, you know, that's always a balance that we have to think about. But that could be a viable option to potential add programming if we're not looking at it as a total one-to-one. Perhaps you could do soccer here and move softball to an existing softball field or something like that. On the bottom, you're, you're, you're looking at, and I'm not proposing this as, as an outline, but you're looking at sort of the Rolls Royce option. And I, and I, I show that as an option of the way you can really add capacity. So if we have softball fields right now or soccer fields that get played into the ground, which we certainly do, by adding either field turf or lighting, you can essentially add play hours to those sites. So although we won't be adding acres to the park system, you could replace some of that play value by adding amenities within existing infrastructure. Examples could be the Roseborough Park fields. We have a number of days we can't use them because they'll be destroyed due to water. If you update drainage there, does that become an option where you can do more play there? Autumn Grove Fields, Howard Johnson Fields right now are not irrigated in a meaningful way, which pretty much means they're pretty tough to play on come fall because particularly after three seasons of drought. And so that's not the Rolls Royce option. That might be in the, you know, fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar range to make those fields have a higher capacity where you can do more on them without adding park acreage. So those are things to be kind of thinking about as well. All of that is to say, as we start to look at next steps related to that, I think we have to be really cautious to not look at just one-to-one. So the, I think, old way of thinking would say there's a softball field there and there's a playground and a basketball court and horseshoes. We need to replace exactly that somewhere else. I think instead, we need to get the big map out and say, maybe we could add soccer here. Maybe we could look at pickleball here and move softball here. How does it all kind of fit together? And the way we really need to do that is with comprehensive assessment of our overall needs. We've had some preliminary conversations about doing that statistically. Our last statistical needs assessment was twenty eleven. So we're probably due to touch base again with the community, make sure we're meeting their needs. Also conversations with the youth associations, which I think would probably be putting the cart in front of the horse to start to have those conversations before we've had this one. So the, as we look at that, those are things to think about. We would determine shortages and then study feasibility. So as I said, I threw out some probably irresponsibly flippant numbers regarding irrigation costs. No, we actually did get that quoted. We know roughly what that cost, but what would be the feasibility of implementing a plan? Would it be a multi-year plan? Would it be a one-off? We're just going to upgrade this park to try to offset some of those losses. Again, I would propose likely phased implementation. The third approach is a pretty creative one and one that really sort of motivated us to come and talk at this point in the game. And this is the, one potential way to look at actually sort of gaining that acreage back would be through partnership with the Roseville Area School District. This is not a new concept. In fact, I, as I looked through files in my office, there was a very preliminary concept drawn at Parkview School as part of the master plan in two thousand nine. I, I'm not, I don't know the background and why that didn't make it. I assume it was a funding issue probably. But we do currently use this baseball field at Parkview School. In fact, the city does the infield maintenance, the school district mows it. But right now, it's a sort of a year, year-to-year handshake, you know, we, we take care of each other type situation. There's a lot of acreage here at Parkview Schools that could potentially replace some of the acreage lost at Veterans Park as we look at that whole constriction idea. It doesn't replace it in that neighborhood, but it replaces it in the park system where you can get creative again and say, well, what if we could get this turf to a level of quality where we can play our youth soccer there? What if we could update one of these existing softball fields to a point where it meets our softball needs or again? Or again, to my previous slide, what if you go off the back of the envelope and say, well, we could put softball here and soccer here, and then we put pickleball over there, or something like that, to really make sure we're looking at this holistically. As you look at this from the aerial, it looks like a great, simple, no-brainer solution. Matt, you figured this out. Um, the 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 truth is that there's uh some some issues here. Uh, first and foremost is Parkview School is, the parking is significantly above the playing fields. And when our baseball association utilizes this field, that's the biggest concern that we hear is that it is difficult to get from the parking lot down to here, and because of that, they park across Dale Street, which is not a situation that we want.
Cross zone.
Yep, and um, and and I, again, want to be very conscious of if we were to do this right, I think there would need to be some intentionality and thought into that infrastructure piece, making sure that we can get people access to the site. There are also some significant soil condition issues. There's not irrigation down there. There's work to be done. And we are just very, very much in the dipping the toes in the water of this conversation at this point. So my first proposal with related to that would be a feasibility study to even understand, are we talking six figures or seven figures? Like, what would be the investment to get that up to snuff? Um, of course, if we wanted to do that, um, the the other, a- another parcel that did come up in our just very preliminary conversation um was Abatutetcha. There's some green space there that um was sort of mentioned as an afterthought as a potential option as well. Um, that is, of course, located in southwest Roseville, which is an area that right now lacks park and park access. Um, so that could be another option to think about as we look at all this as well. All of this is to say that if, from my perspective, if the city were to move forward in something, uh, some arrangement like that, we would need a long-term commitment from the school district. Uh, whatever that means, that's up for future conversations, and we wouldn't want to invest in a park-school concept and then find out in five years, um, through nobody's ill intent, but just plans change, that that parcel would not be available to us any longer. Um, that said, there are examples of success in plenty of other communities where the city and the school district come together. And what I would envision is the school district provide the land, the city provide the sort of capital to do the project. And from there, we get something that's mutually beneficial. Um, again, would have to be examined throughout the whole system to make sure that whatever we put there benefits the park system as a whole and is not a short-sighted, well, we need to fill a softball field, so we're putting a softball field there. We want to look at it through a bigger lens. Uh, we would have to identify a funding plan, and then, as I said, uh, negotiations on the details of an agreement. Uh, we did have a very preliminary conversation with superintendent about this about a month ago. And I would say preliminarily, there seemed to be some common ground. Uh, but certainly, the next step would be for City Manager Trudgeon and I to talk to the school board, which they've proposed for later this month. Um, but again, pending how you all feel about that would be that piece. So before I get to the Q and A, I I buried the lead of of, in terms of funding plan, we don't know enough right now to have a funding plan for these things. I mean, we are very much in the early stages, um, but there are a couple of potential funding sources that can be available. The largest one is park dedication. We do have a significant park dedication fund based on development that has come into Roseville over the last decade. And really, this is the sort of development that park dedication is intended for, which is to take a parcel that lacks park amenities and to make it a great accessible park space. So that could help with some of this. Additionally, there still are dollars budgeted for some of those capital items at Veterans Park, and those could be utilized in some of this way as well as we look forward on that planning. So um, I I know uh Councilmember Shorter usually compliments that when I come, I've got the finances all worked out. Today, that's not the case. Um, but all of that is to say that it's also not, I I'm not coming to you without having thought about that. We certainly have considered that that, um, and although we don't have all the answers, it's it's something to, that we have thought about. So with that, again, I'm seeking two things from the council. The first is general feedback and conversation. Um, I I don't have an icebreaker for you, but I hope there is some general conversation.
It'll take twenty minutes if you can appreciate that.
And then the uh, and and then the other piece is, I think, specific feedback on whether you're comfortable with uh City Manager Trudgeon and I speaking with the school district uh at the end of the month here. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Merrill.
All right. Well, as it says on the slide, this is an opportunity for a Q and A and discussion. So thoughts or questions from the council?
One thing I was going to mention when you mentioned Abatutetcha, also that that has parking there. So now, question on that area. Does that have a softball field already?
They do have two softball fields. Um, right now, our youth association has not gotten a ton of access to it through just a variety of reasons, but that's certainly something we would plan to pursue as part of this one way or the other.
And does it have lights?
It does not.
Uh, when you're talking about lights, I think when you're close to residential, that's going to be a conversation for input.
For sure.
Yeah, I was, one of the things I was thinking about is, well, we've got that park dedication land on the east side of Lexington across from this site.
Yep.
But I can't imagine that would be a good place to put like a half-court basketball court because it's surrounded by homes, and that becomes a noise and nuisance issue.
Yeah, we've looked at that site, and again, mostly in the sit-around-a-table, what could we do there? Um, it was definitely acquired with the intent of sort of a conservation, maybe put a pathway through there. It's so close to Lexington, it creates challenges for any other uses. It's not to say that's DOA, but we we haven't really been able to figure out a way we could utilize it in a more meaningful way without it badly interfacing with Lexington.
Right. Well, certainly, it's not big enough to put a soccer field on there or something like that.
Correct, yes.
How many soccer fields do we have?
Um, we have essentially, well, it depends on on what you would rate as a soccer field, but we have five uh game-quality rectangular fields. Um, but it's not just soccer that utilizes those spaces. Soccer, lacrosse, and football are all, um, have some seasonal overlap on those spaces.
Plus, we have all the little tiny fields that we-
Correct.
Like at at this site at Veterans Park.
Right.
We're just playing on little ones for little children.
Like a half-courtish.
Correct. And it gets much larger when you get to that, where you have, uh, I guess Lexington Park, Veterans Park, Autumn Grove, so you probably have seven or eight at that.
Quality. My initial thought is a kind of a uh both-and approach or an all-of-the-above approach seems to make some sense from my perspective. I'd be interested to hear other points of view, but that's just my initial reaction.
Um, I was curious on the mock-up plan uh with the maintenance building, and I'd like to just say for the record, because I'm a broken record. I just don't like that maintenance building there at all, but whatever, moving on as if it were to go there. Would there be the possibility of um straightening out that road coming through the condominiums to uh meet Lexington at a ninety-degree angle and possibly put half-court basketball court in that space?
So you-
Get that back up.
Yeah, sorry. So you're stating kind of here?
Yep, so coming out at eleven.
No, no. Further east.
Nope, right there, at eleven, going down-
Yep.
And heading toward Lexington.
Yeah, I think that's sort of the, uh, to me, that was the parcel that would be the, it's not ours, so the city doesn't own that right now. But that would be one potential area.
So we don't own the space up to that, um, to this, oh, that other one was good.
Line is right.
This is, this is the good slide.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I thought if we did it, if we owned that's, that parcel there, if we straightened out that road and put the half-court basketball court on the other side where the homes are, then at least it keeps it accessible to the families.
So you're talking about the part that that had sort of northeast-
No.
Right into Lexington?
No, I'm talking about right.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Sure, okay.
Everybody else was pointing farther west, and you-
Yeah, no, I was talking about right there. Like, if you could straighten that- if you could straighten that out, but if we don't own any of it, then it doesn't matter. But I thought if there, if our parcel went all the way up to the edge of the road, would it matter where the road was, you know?
I think that road is a prior road. It's not-
Yeah, it's part of the development.
Yeah, so.
Is, it's always made me wonder why they did it that way, but yeah, it's it's the way they did it.
It does, and it's hard to get around, but.
All right, Juan, you know I'm going to ask you this. How much do we have in the park dedication fund?
We currently have close to two million dollars, and there are around about two million. I don't have the exact dollar amount. Um, we have about a half a million currently committed, a little over half a million currently committed to the park that we are putting in in southwest Roseville. Uh, that project's currently going very well, and I'm optimistic about where that'll come in, but I don't want to come back to you until I have that fully done. Uh, we've also talked about a couple of other uses for that fund, uh, including the uh Rosebrook Park, if we were to have something there as we look to potentially reconfigure that space potentially splash pad instead of a pool. So I want to be careful that we don't dip into that too many. But um, all of that said is, once we get done with the park in southwest Roseville, we probably will have about one point four to one point five million dollars in that fund that could plausibly, at least some of that, be utilized for this.
Well, because that, as you noted, it's somewhat restricted on what you can use it for. And so it's nice that we would actually have a use so-
Correct.
I mean, obviously, we don't want to deplete it, but we have an amount. I I would agree with the mayor, though. I think it makes sense that you look at all the options, because I think until we have an idea of what it's going to take for all of that, from not, you know, obviously, cost, but even just work and and everything else and how it would fit together. I think it makes sense that you'd want to look at all the options.
And actually, you made a good point about the sort of the needs ascertainment-
You're right.
Um, having been done in twenty eleven or thereabouts as part of the master plan process. I mean, yeah, we've we've talked about some of our other what we just talked about, our housing assessment, which was done in twenty eighteen and being outdated, you know, I mean, so I think it definitely makes sense to check back in with the community as part of that holistic approach to really have a good understanding, because it would make no sense to me to put a lot of investment into property acquisition and upgrading and find out that we're doing it all around a twenty eleven plan that doesn't even apply to the city anymore, so. Um, I think that's an excellent part of it, and it makes sense to do regardless of kind of this situation, but it just helps, helps with the solution part of this situation. And and I do have to say, as one of the instigators of the notion of putting the maintenance facility on that site, I um, I I guess I have some blame to the part about losing the uh, losing the park uh capacity there. So I I'm definitely committed to to solutions in that area. And I think, you know, that Autumn Grove option, we should, we need to make that part of the conversation, too, because certainly, things that are serving that that this constellation, you know, i- i- while you don't want it to be, though, well, we lost one of these, we want to put one of these back in. I think we do want to, to the extent we can, and to the extent it makes sense in the bigger picture of things, make sure that we're not causing you know, people to suddenly have to travel long distances for that particular amenity that every other constellation has, and now this one doesn't, or something. So.
That's true, but I think coming from southwest West Roseville, there's so little down there, I think we need to look seriously at if if the community with some conversation-
I would say that's that's one part of the twenty eleven plan that has not lost relevance, is adding adding part area, you know, facility in that that part of the city.
And I think talking to the school board makes sense for you and Mr. Trudgeon. I think that's perfectly a good idea. I see why we would want to do that, find out what the options would be. And as you said, it's been done other places, so it's not like we're re, we're inventing something from scratch. There are other implements to look at.
Hi.
We've done joint efforts in the school district already, gymnasiums and the gymnastics center.
The Wasso Ball Field started that way, absolutely, and I didn't mean to bury that lead, yep.
Oh, I just think it's also important, um, Parkview is one of the only places kids would go sledding. So I wouldn't want to be the reason that that wasn't available. That seems small, but you know, if we put up a a field that has astral turf or something like that, and suddenly that huge chunk of land is no longer accessible to just anybody who wants to use it, so I just want to make sure it's not great grass. It's kind of horrible. But just, I wouldn't want to lose something that people come from all over just to enjoy for a few months a year, but still, it's, it's something that's important. But the terrain, I think that is flat, and it doesn't really explain that it's it's a pretty rugged terrain.
And I'm trying to remember on the project that the watershed district did on that side a few years ago, if any of the facility for dealing with the water extends out into the flat area, or if it was called sort of all under the hill. Because obviously, they they changed the hill as part of that project to put in underground storage and things like that, so I think all they did was essentially kind of invade into what used to be a full regulation soccer field and make it a little smaller, and then not maintain it as well, essentially.
Now, they, the, all of that is race, and I I feel like they're holding tanks or stuff under that, what was the, what was the track and football field? Really can't be used because they put on, they put up so much material into that.
We would have to-
Great off the uh, off the side of that.
Understand that better, I think, you know, and in terms of, you know, and the other piece of that is is trying to add sensible parking into that, and we may-
And how would you access it? Would you have to go through the-
Well, I think that's-
Back of the building.
We have to look at potentially possibly some acquisition on the northeast side of the site to help that work, too. I don't know. I mean, there's that that business at large.
Well, and all of this is to say that um we've had some of the same conversations and on the staff side. And I think that this really would be step one, would be a a number one, understanding the school district's interest, and then number two would be a feasibility study to understand all of that, because uh we've talked to Public Works about, could we access from the south, and you know, on back a napkin, maybe there's options there, but we haven't gone far enough down that path to really understand it, as as well as the water storage issues. We know that's an issue as well.
The other thing on that site, of course, that in the, in right in the southeast corner, uh, right by Dale and B is a field that was put in using Twins Community Fund funds. Uh, that, I don't think it's used for anything. Other, the only thing I've seen played there occasionally on weekend mornings is cricket.
They they can't play there anymore because of-
Because of what they did to the old field, yes, yeah.
It was, it was used until that was done.
Right. So and I just, the the main reason I brought it up, uh, not to to note that necessarily, but the the, if there are obligations that come as part of having put that in with those funds. I suppose if we just made it unusable as part of the the watersets project, maybe there aren't those obligations, but uh, I think we'd want to understand that as part of these conversations.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh, and Mr. Council, so the uh meeting we would uh plan to go to would be May twenty eighth. They don't have as many meetings in the summer, so we're going to catch, catch that here as we can, and it's going to be a check-in. I think what we're looking from the school board says it's acceptable for us to pursue fur- further. Uh, if the um idea is, yeah, let's keep talking about it, then we would probably come back to talk to you about getting feasibility studies um started up and what that scope would be, and then as well as providing any other updates we would have on some of these other strategies as well. I mean, this is going to be kind of a longer conversation over time, but now we can certainly provide um updates, but the um, meeting with the school district was some somewhat time sensitive, so we want to make sure at least we check with that. We don't want to get ahead of our policy boards if there's not any interest, and it sounds like from the council, yeah, let's talk about it. That's one of the many options, and we'll come back and talk about it several more times before some decisions are made such. So appreciate that. I think we have uh what we need uh from the council on that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks for being thoughtful and and for looking at the holistic picture. I think that's important, which has already been said. Great. Uh, next on our agenda, we have future agenda review, community board announcements, uh, starting for future meetings for citizens.
Yep, uh, just real quickly, and all right, switch there. Here we go. Uh, next meeting is the twentieth. Uh, we uh have a very short uh Visit Roseville update. Um, I believe it's hospitality week, um, and so uh Ms. Warren from the Visit Roseville just wants to uh come and just talk a little bit about that, so we'll kick that off. We also have the fire department staff review. This is just kind of a a long-term conversation and plan about uh what our needs are going into the future. Uh, we do have a specific easement vacation at five seventy-one uh Rose Lawn. And we need to have a public hearing on, and then um the only other major business I have is a closed session uh for my city manager performance review. So that would happen at the end of the meeting. And then on the third, um, something that I did indicate to the council previously, we will need to convene as a board of adjustment and appeals regarding the fence at two fifty-seven. Uh, that's in the right-of-way, uh, two fifty-seven McCarran's. We have some right-of-way vacations. We um do want to award the contract for the recycling carts. Um, assuming uh the review goes smoothly, and there is some uh takeaways from there, we will look to approve my city manager goals. And um, working right now on the community survey, I think that's pretty much done, and just trying to schedule a time for that to be presented to the city council, so either June third or June seventeenth. On the seventeenth, we do have all department equity update. Uh, we will have a joint meeting with the finance commission, kind of get back in that routine of me annually. Uh, we want to start talking about any legislative impacts coming from uh this most recent session. We do want to, if you may recall before, I was talking about earlier, we would have some conversations about the materials and the packets, we decided to consolidate all of that. Um, declare any midterm commission vacancies. That's just a standard thing we have. As of now, I don't think we have any, so um, we talked about tonight about maybe using that process anyway for the new commission that we would have. And just a reminder, June twenty-fourth, we don't have a meeting. That is Rosefest Parade. That's all I have.
Questions on the future agenda or uh future agenda items from council members or communications or announcements?
Thank you all for attending the NYFS luncheon on Wednesday, and we were finally recognized.
That was funny.
That's the advantage of having some, a member of the council as the chair. I can correct those things.
Have we heard anything yet on how the-
It went pretty well for the first time back. It did, it not to-
It went pretty well for the first time back. It did, not to the original numbers that we had before, but it was successful.
I thought the venue change was helpful.
I thought it was, too. Thanks for the feedback. I'll let them know.
Anything else from council members? Otherwise, the only item left on our agenda is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Second, the councilor has drawn to adjourn. No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, and we return at 9:09 PM. Thank you.